Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our Larkspur City Council meeting. Let us start with a roll call, shall we?
Councilmember Andre.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Way.
Here.
Mayor Candell.
I am here. Let us roll into the Pledge of Allegiance. Feel free to stand if you are able.
What is the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America? To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a united, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, going to the next item on our agenda, that is, public comment. Public comment will be for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in our audience who would like to make a public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will move on to presentations and proclamations. And there are none. Now I will then move on to approval of the consent calendar. Would anyone on the dais like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Or discussion? Would anybody in the audience like to discuss an item on the consent calendar? Come on down. What do you got?
Well, I'm gonna do it now or tell you just the item.
Why don't you tell us whatever your issue is, and then we'll figure out if we should pull it and do it separately, or we'll...
It's gonna be brief. In its regards to item 4.8.
Okay.
I would just like to be able to make a short presentation and present some materials to the clerk for you guys to look at later.
Okay.
And actually, I will... These don't need to be distributed right now. Listening to me. Okay. I respectfully request that the mayor and vice mayor consider the following during the annual performance review and changes to the city manager's compensation. At the November 6th council meeting, city manager Schwartz and city attorney Woodruff requested that the council become a non-charter member of the California Community Housing Agency. Neither city manager Schwartz nor city attorney Woodruff advised the council that by accepting their recommendation, the following would occur. And that first page of the council meeting is there. And it talks about the 320 units of Serenity in Larkspur Landing, which was was going to become 100% tax exempt. What they neglected to tell you, or to tell the council at that time, is that the city would lose approximately $900,000 in general fund revenues for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Materials are in there. And according to the Tax Collector's Office, the city is currently losing more than $1 million per year in general funds. There's a report prepared by the deputy tax attorney, which gives you just some statistics. They further neglected to explain to the council that the twin cities with bonds would lose more than $37,000 a year in bond payments from Serenity. And we didn't even tell our partner, Corte Madera, which in my accountant's mind means Corte Madera gets to pay more for the bonds. Since they have a lot of money, I guess that's okay. They didn't tell the council that the paramedic authority, our joint powers authority that we've been in this town for almost 50 years would lose $27,000 plus per year. And there were other agencies in there, and you'll see in the summary of summary of the tax bills for the 2019-2020, which agencies there are, such as school districts, Marin Emergency Radio. And main important thing is, with no revenue to Larkspur, we still provide 100% of the first responders' emergency services to Serenity, which now probably has about 400 residents over there. And I respectfully request that the mayor and vice mayor consider these facts and the negative impact on our city when they're doing the annual review and compensation review.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
No, I'd like to review that after. I'll probably look at it after the meeting, but I appreciate that.
Okay, so just so you see it, the first page, there are four parcels at Serenity. And this is a summary of the 2019-2020 tax bill detail. The 12 or 13 different categories. The next page, which got a little yellow on it, was prepared by the assessor's office projecting lost revenue to where we are today. And today, we are losing in excess of $1 million in general fund revenue, according to the assessor or Tax Collector's Office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to pull an item or discuss an item? Okay, I would actually like to, I don't need to pull them, but I'd like a little clarity clarification from staff perhaps, which is items 4.5 and 4.6, which are basically administrative costs for the rent control ordinance, or the, actually, the rent control that we passed here. And my reading on it is, you know, 4.5 is about 50,000, 4.6 is another 80,000 plus, maybe another 20. I was curious, I just want to make sure we're keeping track of total costs of this program and administering this program and, you know, how we're monitoring that moving forward, if that makes sense.
Well, as we advise the council, when the council went through the rent stabilization discussions, the total costs to administer the program are not entirely known, so we provided you with rough estimate ranges. We also advised you on several occasions that the general fund would almost certainly have to front all those costs in the first year of implementation. So these are two of the items to achieve those goals, achieve those tasks. Ultimately, when the council considers what sort of fee it wants to assign to the program, which you're anticipated to do after we've built the whole model out and we know the true costs, you can decide if you want to amortize the first year costs into the program fee and essentially recover it over time.
And are we tracking these kind of separately so that, you know, at the end of the first year, we can say, hey, the administration of this program cost us X?
Not only are we tracking these sorts of costs, but we've asked the finance folks to add a line to time cards so that staff can begin to track true time against the program.
Perfect. And can we, as city council, get updates, maybe quarterly or something like that, and kind of get a feel for how it's going?
Yeah, I mean, I think in the first quarter, it's gonna be harder to give you a lot. There's a lot of implementation, particularly on the software package, but we certainly can give you an update on what we have. I think from talking to these vendors, particularly the 3DI, you're really six months out from fully understanding what you need to build out to to implement the software package.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone's staff have any questions about either those items or any of the other items?
Well, I just wanted to ask clarifying question on 4.8. So even if we pass it on the consent calendar today, I understand that we have further opportunity to comment on that item.
The council has a policy that compensation for employees is supposed to be published on one agenda and then considered at a subsequent agenda. So this is the publication of the compensation amendment to my package.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other items on the consent calendar we need to discuss, can I get a motion?
So.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we get a roll call, please? It is a motion to pass the consent calendar.
Councilmember Andre.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way.
Yes.
Mayor Candell.
Yes. Okay, consent calendar is passed. Going to item five, city managers' oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I wanted to thank Assistant City Manager Shannon O'Hare and her staff. They have the new banners up. I hope you've seen them. They're a revised version of the ones that were up when the Rose Bowl dance was revised at the 100-year celebration. You can see those two behind you, but in addition to having new banners that are just the scale for our polls now, we actually were able to get them to convert these images into higher resolution images that we'll be able to use for future publications. So it was a nice addition, and I think they came out really nicely. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Then moving to item six, this would be council members' oral reports. Any council makers like to make a report at this point?
Sure, I'll just a couple announcements. So I was at the SMART board meeting today, and I'm just gonna repeat that we have this little flyer here, "Youth and Seniors Ride Free." So if you're 18 or less, or 65 or older, jump onboard, it's free. And they're gonna be trying to tie it in with some of the games coming up and with the nice weather. And by the way, SMART set a ridership record. It has not yet broken 3,000 riders day, I think, and that was just the past week, and it's been really trending up, which is positive, as we know. COVID has hit so many transportation agencies like Bard and others, so some good news, but a lot of work to do. The other thing I just wanted to put a placeholder, particular for my colleagues is, so I'm on the Marin Clean Energy Board now, and we've seldom had any reports, like what's going on there. So I just want to say we're like our council tonight, going into budget season. And like for our council, there was a surplus which we had decided to use for facilities. And it's really a big issue, you know, MCE has, you know, accumulated a good reserve. Should that be used for operations? And, you know, when you're in the wind farm, solar business, there's a lot of, you know, problems with the spiking of energy, like in the cold, dark winters, you don't have enough, and you start burning fuel. So we could invest money there, or as an alternative, we know that energy in California is incredibly expensive, double what it is in, you know, other parts of the country. So should it be used to, you know, kind of help people with cost of living? So that's something where I'll just take two minutes on subsequent meetings and try to, you know, get that out there. And if there's any input from the public, I felt that would be a better way. I mean, I'm certainly trying to do my homework, but I think we have 37 member agencies in MCE. Larkspur's not a big voice, but I'd like us to at least talk about something as big and consequential as as energy policy. So I'll be bringing that up in the future. And that's it for me.
Thanks. Councilmember Andre, any thing you'd like to add?
I have just a couple items. One, I want to thank Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Skinner for temporarily filling in those potholes at Piper Park. I think that was highly appreciated. My understanding is that the parking lot won't be resurfaced or redone until the summer, but I think the temporary fix was very much appreciated by people who go to Piper. Secondly, I do want to take you back on what, you know, Gabe was just talking about. Climate change, I think, is, you know, in how we reduce carbon emissions, I think, is a big issue. And I wanted to just remind everyone that Resilient Neighborhoods is a good, it's a good organization where residents can go to see how, figure out, you know, get ideas on how they can reduce their carbon footprint, conserve water, you know, if they have questions about electrification. So I'd encourage residents, as we're, you know, thinking about what they can do, households and what they can do to help our environment and reduce emissions. I think that's a great organization for them to check out. Thank you.
And guess where you said nothing today? I've got nothing today. So let's move on to item number seven, public hearings. We have one, 7.1, amending the fee schedule of the city of Larkspur. Could we get a report on that, please?
Administrative Services Director Amelia Gabrielle's gonna come up. Before she does, I did want to make one administrative note about the report. We did find one erroneous reference, and so, but it's administrative in nature. In the fee schedule under the library, there's references to book and a fee about waiver for late books. It should be late items, not everything in the library is a book. So we'll be making that administrative correction should you adopt the fee schedule this evening. Everything else is the same. It doesn't affect any of the numbers.
Good evening. My name is Amelia Gabrielle. I'm the Administrative Services Director for the city of Larkspur. And our city staff has worked with Clear Source Financial Consulting to work on the schedule, the proposed fee schedule that you have in the council packet. There's no structural changes to the fee schedule. The proposed fee schedule reflects a 3.67% annual change in the Consumer Price Index, and we have some minor changes into it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I just ask you to speak louder or bring the mic a little closer?
Yes, sorry about that. I have a very soft voice. So I was saying that the city staff worked with a Clear Source Financial Consulting firm on the proposed fee schedule. There are no structural changes to the fee schedule. The proposed fee schedule reflects a 3.67% annual change in the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, and there are some minor changes to it. We do have online with us our consultant from Clear Source Financial Consulting, he's via Zoom, and he will be presenting the highlights of the proposed fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council for allowing me to speak with you this evening. My name is Terry Madsen. I'm here from Clear Source, and I've seen many of you over the years. We assist the city of Larkspur with a part of its normal annual operating procedures dealing with update of what we call user and regulatory fees. I'm just gonna walk you through a very brief presentation. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, but I will not be long-winded. Hopefully, do you see a presentation screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So as I mentioned, this is part of your annual operating procedures. Each fiscal year, ahead of the start of a new fiscal year, city staff examines its schedule of user and regulatory fees and then proposes any adjustments that would go into effect in the upcoming fiscal year. So this evening's item is to help you determine whether to to make any adjustments to fees that would be effective July 1, 24 through June 30, 25. You typically see this item about 60 days in advance of the new fiscal year because of some waiting periods between adjustment of fees and effective date for those fee adjustments. So you and cities throughout the state keep what we call schedule of user and regulatory fees. These are fees that you collect when you are providing a direct service to a specific receiver of service, as opposed to using your general tax dollars to provide services that provide broad community-wide benefit, thinking about things like public safety, public works, park maintenance. We typically see those as funded by general tax revenues, and we see mechanisms like user and regulatory fees where we see a direct receiver of benefit. You periodically review these fees, you proactively manage them. Because they are fees, you want to ensure you comply with legal requirements that are outlined in the California Constitution and the California Government Code. And then I really like to highlight that idea of when we recover our costs of service, it helps us to continue to meet the service level expectation of the community. So there is not intended to be any profit-making here, because we're dealing with fees. We don't want to establish any fees that would exceed our cost of service. We would just set fees that could recover up to our cost of service. Your fee schedule was most recently updated prior to 23-24, so it was updated in May 2023. That update to fees in the adopting resolution, city council directed staff to annually consider updates to fees based on the change in regional cost inflation. City of Larkspur, like other agencies, is influenced by regional cost inflation. You have changes in labor costs, service supplies costs, insurance costs, and so forth. So regional cost inflation is typically a good indicator of, as a reasonable metric to adjust fees in between comprehensive studies. The most recent change in regional CPI was 3.67%, so the vast majority of your fees in the schedule are proposed to increase by that amount. As Amelia mentioned, there's some other minor changes, but they're mostly clarification items. And and just that final note, any updates to fees and any enhanced cost recovery is really intended to recover existing costs of service. It's not expanding service levels. It's really recovering costs that exist today, and we just want to make sure that we keep up with those changes in costs rather than fall behind. This concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for your attention. If you have any questions or feedback, I'm happy to receive them. Thank you.
Okay, Amelia, was there anything else that you wanted to say on this presentation?
No.
Okay. So thank you both for that. Appreciate it. Let me bring it back to council. Does council have any questions for staff?
Was the, I'm trying to look on page, I think it's on page 39, was the changes to the outdoor dining initiated in here? I think I see, Jake, you said, I think I see it on page 39. I just wanted to make sure we had gotten that in there.
Yes.
Okay.
I received direction from Julian Skinner to incorporate this in the fee schedule.
Got it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Kind of follow up on that. Sorry, can we, is there any reason why we didn't actually put the actual dollar amount of the fee of the outdoor dining fee in the schedule?
The policy calls for the Director of Public Works to do periodic assessment of the prevailing rate in the downtown and then base the percentage on that dollar amount, so you can't put the dollar amount in the fee schedule because of that. He publishes what the prevailing rate is when he solicits, when someone comes in for an encroachment permit, so he would tell them at that time.
Okay. I just thought that it might be easier if there's a number in there. I mean, the footnote is helpful, but for someone who might be interested, the the actual dollar amount isn't in there.
The problem is if you, you can't, if you put a dollar amount here, you have to charge that dollar amount, and the policy that the council adopted isn't a dollar amount. It's a percentage of a calculation by the Public Works Director. So if it doesn't work to put it in the published fee schedule, in our other documents that we would actually give to somebody, we can put what the current amount is.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, good questions. Anybody else have questions for staff on this?
Yeah, just a very basic question. So, you know, I was looking over all the different categories of fees and just, I'm assuming 3.7% is the, you know, is the overall factor, you know, the increase. But do you also look at areas, is there any analysis of where we might be undercharging and then perhaps go over 3.7% or vice versa, where, you know, we we found we were recovering more than we needed to, you know, to sort of redistribute the fee schedule?
So, yes, staff does that periodically. In the in-between years, you you typically just apply the regional cost inflation. But prior to the 23-24 fee schedule update, a planning, a study specifically linked to planning fees was conducted to figure out if any recalibration was necessary, and there were some non-CPI changes proposed. Just recently, building fees were examined to make sure they're in line with your actual cost of service. So on a periodic basis, you do reexamine these fees and determine whether recalibration beyond or less than CPI is is logical, and it's on a fee-by-fee basis rather than an aggregate basis.
Okay, and just one other question. You know, given the 11 municipalities, Marin is 3.67, the standard number, or do you know that?
It's a commonly used metric, yes. The metric that Larkspur is using is tied to your own region's cost inflation, and the majority of agencies that we work with would use a similar metric.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions for staff? Nope. Okay, then can I get a motion regarding Resolution 20-24? Okay, excellent point. Is there anyone in the public? Let's open this up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the council on this issue? Seeing no one, I will now close public comment. Bringing it back to council, assuming that has not changed anybody's mind, the lack of public comment. Is there a motion I can get from council?
I'll move 7.1.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way.
Yes.
Mayor Candell.
Yes. 7.1 passes. That was our only public hearing. Let's move to item eight, which is business items. 8.1, Presentation on Implementing Rent Stabilization. Can we get a report on that one, please?
This is more of a cheat slideshow, so I have an outline to refer to, so I don't lose my place. So we want to just give you an update now that Ordinance 1067 is is law after the referendum. It became effective on April 4th, the day after you certified the election on April 3rd. So we've started the process of implementing it along the lines consistent with our presentations throughout your consideration of the ordinance. And I suspect this will be an ongoing dialogue, because I talked about some of these implementation procedures. Not surprisingly, I think we'll find that tweaks here and there, not just to our operational program, but also perhaps to different parts of the ordinance will be appropriate to make sure we actually fulfill what the council said during the hearings on the matter. So again, the ordinance became effective on April 4th of this year, so basically after your last council meeting. One of the key things in launching the implementation and probably the thing we've gotten the most questions about is the retroactive provision in the ordinance. The law allowed you to establish a retroactive application or base rent date, and the idea was to establish a date that was considered a reasonable date for any affected person in the community to have known that you were conducting discussions about this issue. We had advised the council that we felt the earliest date possible was May 8th of 2023. So that means that the ordinance was effective for all intents and purposes on May 2023, and that creates a little bit of a challenge since it didn't become certified through the referendum process until April 4th of 2024. So we'll talk a little bit about what we have to do now as a result of that. I'm also gonna cover just a little bit, we've started to map out what outreach education support may look like for this ordinance, and you just passed the consent calendar and the contract with Echo is on there. They're gonna be one of our vendors that supports us in this regard. And then when you combine with the Ordinance 1067 with the eviction protections ordinance, which is 1068, you have essentially created a regulatory scheme that necessitates having some sort of database so that we're tracking units and rents in Larkspur, and so we'll need to launch what's commonly called a rental registry program on the consent calendar. You authorized us to engage a vendor called 3DI, who will help us to do that particular part of the process, and I'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. And then when you have a local rent stabilization ordinance, you need to have what's called a fair rate of return application process. So we've been putting that together. As the council will recall, a lot of our ordinance was modeled after the city of Oxnard's ordinance, and so we've drawn a lot on their fair rate of return application process to drive our own thoughts. And so if you went and looked at Oxnard's page, when we launched a lot of this information in the next few business days, there's gonna be a lot of similarity in that particular application. And then your ordinance calls for there to be a rent review board that will hear any appeals of the fair rate of return process. So the ordinance says that the rent review board will be five people, two tenants, two landlords, and one person who's a resident, but neither a tenant nor a landlord. So presumably a homeowner. And so your city clerk, Allison Phallus, and I will begin the process in the next few weeks. And so your city clerk, Allison Phallis, and I will begin the process in the next few weeks, if not days, to put together an application that will publish and talk a little bit more about that, too. So let's start with what's been the thing we've been most occupied with since you passed, since you certified the election, which is getting ready to inform people about dealing with the retroactive provision. Essentially, we went, so we went back and looked and we applied CPI back the five times it was published since your retroactive date. That number's always been over two percent. So as a result, the way the ordinance has ridden the cap, you know, the rent cap has always been seven percent back to the retroactive date. So the issue that arises is if a lease was amended by more, the rent was increased by more than seven percent subsequent to May eighth, then that means that the one of two things, one of two scenarios has to take place. Either the landlord has to adjust the lease to seven percent and provide some sort of refund or credit to the tenant for any payment above seven percent. Or the landlord needs to submit an application to get retroactive approval for going above the rent cap. So those are both options that'll be available to folks, and we'll have that on our website with guidance on how to do these applications. We tend, we we intend, based on the direction we've received from the council in the past, you know, we're not a, we're not a pull out a big stick and bang on people's heads kind of organization. So you know, this will be a gentle guidance toward resolution. I know there'll be folks who will be anxious to see their credits or refunds potentially implemented, but we want to make sure that our landlord community is comfortable with what's going on, that they understand the what the change is and that they are comfortable with any adjustments or any options they have to pursue exceeding the rent cap.
Next question, I don't think it was described in the ordinance. So if a refund or a credit is due, let's say landlord owes five hundred dollars hypothetically. Is it possible for the landlord, would they need an application to say, hey, you know, it's going to be a little too much to do five hundred dollars at once? Can I do a hundred dollars a month for five months? I mean, is there any guidance as to how that five hundred dollar credit is?
Yeah, so ordinance gives me quite a bit of discretion to make that decision. So we've been trying to figure that out as staff. And what we thought made sense is that essentially we would tell landlords, you can spread that credit out for the balance of that lease year. So if it it might be a little different for different people, if the rent increase took place back on May nine, you have fewer remaining months in that lease to spread it out. Whereas if the lease, their increase took place in January, you'd have more months. But we felt that was probably a reasonable way to line it up because the tenant or the landlord, for other reasons, may be planning to end the lease at the end of that term. So but, you know, we're trying again to to give kind of a a slow runway into this process for folks.
Thank you.
And again, we'll post guidance, and then we'll be posting how to contact us and ask questions about implementation or filing these applications. So for outreach, education and support, we are currently drafting a citywide mailer to advise people these laws are now in effect. Where they can go for more information on the website. We want to make sure we hit everybody. So we're actually going to use two separate databases to do the mailer. One is the street address database. So that's who that should actually be delivered to the property. But a lot of property owners aren't at their street address if they're renting their property. So we also will pull from the assessor all the property owners. This will actually be for us, one of the largest mailings we've done in a while because we'll be hitting both those lists. That's a pretty pretty large number. We want to make sure everybody who's affected has a chance to digest what's going on and can can contact us to get information that they need. We're currently building a landing page. It's it's up now, and we're going to give it sort of a quick, something like cityoflarkspur.org slash rent. Right now, you'd have to kind of jump through and find rent stabilization and eviction protections. Eventually, that'll be where our web portal will reside. But right now, it's a repository of all the debates that you had, all the staff reports that you reviewed, the ordinances themselves. We're working on some new verbiage to start to guide people through the process as they're affected and to offer up the forms that they need to engage in the different processes. We'll have phone and email lines available, including how folks can either get technical questions answered by city staff or what we envision with the support of Echo, the vendor we're going to contract with now. They'll do a lot of the education outreach for both landlords and tenants who have questions, not just about the Larkspur ordinance, but how the Larkspur ordinance works with state and federal rules around renting property. Because that's a layer of complexity that your staff currently is not really equipped to give a lot of answers to. And I can tell you since ordinance ten sixty eight has come into effect, I probably have actually received more questions about state law than I've actually received about Larkspur law. Because a lot of folks who are subject to, for any through an eviction process, which is what ten sixty eight is about, a lot of their questions are actually much more about the guiding state laws around eviction than they are about what you passed in your ordinance. And so having a partner like Echo who's well versed in that information and can guide the tenant to the correct resources to resolve any concerns they have, or guide the landlord to the correct resources so that they follow the law to achieve what they want to achieve, is going to be a really valuable return for all of us. And then lastly, again, I think with a lot of support from our partners at Echo, we'll be putting together pamphlets. They they actually conduct webinars for both landlords and tenants to help provide them with education. So there'll be a resource that we'll rely on for that service as well. I mentioned that we need to put together a database commonly called a rental registry. So now that you've authorized us to engage three D I, we'll work to get them under contract and get their software implementation process going. They essentially sell a shell, a software shell with a module about rental registry, and then they work with you over a three to six month period to tailor that product to your specific ordinance, your specific needs. And they have a very robust database that's searchable behind it that we'll be able to use once it's up and running to really start to track. Not just for our implementation and regulatory responsibilities and enforcement responsibilities, but ultimately the idea that the council had expressed was that they wanted a robust database from which you could ask questions about what's going on in the rental market. I want to assure folks when data is collected in a rental registry and it's anything to talk about publicly is aggregate data. We don't talk about individual lease arrangements of individual tenants and landlords. So all public information around this will be in the aggregate. It's very similar to what we do when we talk about sales tax. We don't talk about individual businesses. We talk about sales tax in aggregate.
Dan, can I ask you about this, this section? Is this, is it voluntary for a rental registry?
It's not. And you'll end up tying it to the fact that they should also have a business license for operating a rental.
So it's compulsory for a business license? And then what are the, did we, are there penalties in the, if they do not participate in the rental registry?
So when we bring you the fee
Okay.
program, that will be one of the discussions will be what penalties if you fail to comply. At this time, the goal, and and this is actually advice from all the vendors we interviewed, was the first year you're trying to to help everybody understand what's going on. So you're you're trying to do more of a carrot and more of a conversation. So you're not out threatening them, and you're probably not, as we said, likely to charge a fee. Because your goal is to get that engagement and and get folks understanding it is going to be mandatory, and they are going to need to comply. And so that way, when you go to that level of compliance and enforcement, you've gone out and warned people, and they've had a long time to digest that this is something they have to do.
And is the rental registry presumed to also include properties that are rented that are not part of the ordinance? So for instance, let's say a single family home or less than, I think it was less than four units.
Yeah, so most agencies, and this was our understanding from the direction from the councils, you wanted the most robust database possible for ancillary questions. Most cities do require all all landlords to file for all units that they're renting, regardless of whether they're subject to ten sixty seven or ten sixty eight. Now, most of those cities have tiered fees, so that if you're not actually subject to the other parts of the program, you're not paying the same fee that somebody who is part of that regulatory scheme is paying.
And is the rental registry would, well, I'm sure we're going to come to this eventually. But if a property owner has multiple units, do they pay per unit?
That's the norm.
The norm?
The charge per unit.
Okay.
And, you know, I should note, you as a council, when we get to that point, we'll make decisions about cost recovery. You do not. You can do fuller cost recovery, or you can do something less than full cost recovery, and that'll be something that we'll have a discussion about that will drive the ultimate fee per unit.
I could just ask a couple of follow up technical questions. So for the rental registry and, you know, three D I's database, what's the starting point? Is it the county assessor? Or, you know, how do we know what units to, you know, put in or even to, you know, ask to register?
So my understanding is they'll work with us to go through, if you're a landlord, your your filings with the state franchise tax board anymore. So that the thank you, CDTFA. So that's your most likely route to start because that's where you'll start to, you're able to identify in that database who's operating a business. So that would be where we'd probably go.
Okay, and and on the mailer, you know, I think we have something like five thousand households in Larkspur. So are we mailing single family homes? Or are we just mailing?
We'll be mailing everyone. We want everyone in the city to to, and we can't presume that a single family home is owner occupied or rented.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I have the last slides you can stay discussion. So you can ask me all this stuff you want. Okay, so and then the rent review board. So a reminder, it's two tenants, two landlords, one resident who doesn't fall in either of those categories. We anticipate launching the application process toward the end of this month or early May. Our goal would be for you to make the appointments in June. That would put them in the same cycle as all the other boards and commissions that you appoint people to. So that would be ideal. If it slips a little, it it slips a little, but and just a reminder, those folks are offering to serve a four year term. Now I'm at discussion. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I have some.
Go ahead.
On the rent review board, what type of disclosures are we expecting an applicant to put on an application?
So just a reminder, the way our ordinance is written is a little different than perhaps if you've been following Fairfax. In Fairfax, that application is entirely public. It's reviewed by the board in public, a public hearing. That's actually not what you passed. What you passed is that application is to staff. Staff would then have that reviewed. We intend to to come back to you. We're we're soliciting folks who do this for a living. They actually study the rental market and they make assessments about what's an appropriate charge for improvements, for example, to property. I was pleased to find out these folks do exist. So and so that application won't ever be public. It'll be the decision that we issue out. So that information is what the rent review board would then have access to.
Why would, why would it not be public when most of our other voluntary boards? It is a public process.
It will depend in part on what the landlord chooses to submit. And then I understand that in the model we're in, we're creating that expert we may retain may have conversations with the landlord to better understand their pro forma and investment, and it's not our desire to expose any business's pro forma to the public. That's not what this process should be about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there other ordinance, other places that do a rental registry board, a rental board that has property owners who are non, not covered under the ordinance? So for instance, they're renting property, but it isn't covered under our ordinance as an alternate to have them since they have no particular property that would be subject to the ordinance?
We took that language right out of Fremont's ordinance, and in talking to Fremont, I don't know that that particular nuance has come up. I think these categories are typically drawn. People are pretty passionately involved in those categories, but you as the council are going to make the ultimate appointment so you can make whatever determination you want in terms of why you would pick one person in each category over another.
So once the applications are are received and then vetted, then we will receive the finalists. Is that how it's supposed to work?
I envision it being very similar to how you appoint a planning commissioner or parking rec commissioner or a library board member.
Okay, and then my last question is, and maybe this is to Sky. Are there other, I know there's a a referent, not, I always get these confused, a referendum being circulated.
Citizens Initiative.
A citizens initiative being circulated to put another, some rent control measure on the November ballot. Are there any procedural things that can happen between now, April fourth, and then that would cause our existing ordinance to be put on hold until until that is resolved, if it comes to that?
Short of some form of litigation that has not yet been surfaced at all. There's nothing inherent in the initiative process that would stop the city from implementing its current ordinance. It would take some outside intervention by a court to stop that. The the initiative process itself doesn't have a mechanism like that. So what will happen is that the ordinance ten sixty eight will remain in effect, ten sixty seven and ten sixty eight will be in effect, continue to be operative up to the point that the registrar of voters certifies the results of the November election.
Should it qualify?
Should should the initiative qualify? Should it be approved by voters? It will go into effect 10 days from the certification. And at that point, ten sixty seven and ten sixty eight will in effect be repealed, and then and the new ordinance will be in place. The city manager and I have actually talked about this some in the steps that he's taking now. I think he would say are ones that would be taken that would be think many of them would be things that 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 would need to be done as part of that ordinance anyway, like the rent registry. The rent registry will exist under either ordinance.
And then my last question is in regards to potential litigation, what is the time limit? The timeframe in which, if there is something filed from April fourth, when this became effective twenty twenty four, is there a time limit in which a individual or individuals have a litigation window in which they can file? I I just.
Well, so there's two, there's, well, there's two elements to that. There's, can they challenge it on on its face?
Yes.
And statute of limitations for that is I I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess three years.
Okay.
But anybody who alleges that they are harmed by the implementation of it would would be able to, the statute of limitations is tied to the act. Like they applied for an adjustment in rent and and were denied or only partially granted, and then there'd be a separate statute of limitations for the as applied challenge. So that's just ongoing.
Okay, so we don't know if that's happened or can, but there's still a window of time for someone to potentially do that. Okay.
That's correct.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions from council members? Okay, I I have one question. Again, for for our city attorney, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So we passed the ordinance. There was a referendum to remove the ordinance. The referendum failed. So our ordinance is still on the books, which means that if we want to make adjustments to that ordinance moving forward, we still have the ability to do that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, just to expand on the answer. For a citizens initiative, the general rule is that if that qualifies for the ballot and is approved by voters, unless the ordinance itself contains provisions that allow for the city council to make amendments to it, it's set in stone until the voters make a further amendment by a vote. But in this case, the ordinance was adopted by the council. It was put on hold until the voters had an up or down vote on it. Having voted yes for for it to be implemented, it remains a city council ordinance, and you can amend it like any other ordinance.
Right, so when we said yes, it can be amended, it was really a rejection. Right. So when we said yes, it can be amended, it was really a rejection of the referendum to take it off the books, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that was my question. Uh, anything else from staff, uh, from council? All right. Thank you, uh, staff for that, uh, wonderful presentation.
You're welcome, uh, Mr. Mayor. And, and again, I just wanna, for the whole community, right now, if you have questions, just email me. Uh, and we'll make sure you get an answer as quickly as we can.
Okay, that was eight point one. Moving to eight point two, everybody, uh, get comfortable. It's time for the budgets. Uh, where would you like to start, Mr. City Manager?
Well, let me tee it up, if you don't mind, Ms. Mayor, or remind folks, uh, how we operate in terms of our budget process. So, um, we typically do a four meeting process to adopt a budget, sometimes five, but we'll hope for four. Um, and we try to do that because there's a lot of information. It's helpful to spread it out across multiple meetings. So we like to kick it off with something that's maybe a little more lighthearted, uh, which is to make sure that the council and the public, uh, get to put faces to the names that they often hear about that are guiding the various services that are provided to the community. And so, uh, one of the things that's critical to budget planning is to talk about what we're accomplishing and what our goals for the subsequent year are. So, uh, what we like to do in this first meeting is have each department head come forward, uh, introduce themselves and talk briefly about what they've accomplished and what the goals are. And then solicit questions about, uh, that information. And then just for folks who are gonna be interested in our budget process, at your next meeting, uh, we'll spend time at sort of the 10,000 foot level, I like to say, where, um, Ms. Gabrielle and I will be talking with you about the assumptions that we're building into the budget, what we're seeing about the economy, what we're hearing from our sales tax experts about trends in our revenue stream for sales tax, what we're hearing from the assessor about trends in our property tax stream, uh, what we're seeing in T O T, all the other revenues that are coming in. And then also we'll talk about the cost side and some of the pressures that we're observing, uh, both internally and externally. As the council knows, we have a lot of agreements with a lot of entities to help serve the community. And so we'll talk through that. Then we start the heavy lifting, second meeting in May. We'll give you the preliminary budget in detail. So you can start to ask questions about individual accounts and line items and requests that have been made to the city. Uh, and then ideally we finish at the first meeting in June, which is the final budget. So we take feedback from the preliminary meeting, incorporate into the final budget. And we also bring you, uh, you, you're now up to about eight to 10 policies that you consider every year as part of your budget process. And so you'll be going through all of those at that June meeting.
Good times.
So we'll start off with what I hope is a, a little light, more lighthearted. And, uh, we have some, uh, new faces and we have some veterans. I'm gonna pick on the veterans first since they've done this before. And so this year I'm gonna have Julian Skinner come up first because he's our, our seasoned department head, to, to present the accomplishments and goals for public works. And I, I didn't say during that whole budget period, you hear a lot from Julian because we also do our capital improvement program as part of our budget process.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I'm Julian Skinner. I am the Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur. Uh, so tonight I have a overview presentation of the city's public works department. Um, so as you know, we oversee, uh, the city's infrastructure and assets. And so, um, that's our streets, uh, the drainage, uh, and some of the utilities, uh, storm drains, traffic signals, uh, streetlights. Um, also the city's buildings, which is city hall. Um, the city still owns the fire stations and then we have the railroad, uh, storage building. Um, and then we do have some buildings around, um, a couple of our pump stations. And then we have, uh, some restrooms, buildings in some of our parks. And then, uh, we also maintain the, the parks. That's our one regional park, Piper, and then the mini parks. Um, there are two working divisions within the public works department. One is the engineering side of the house. The other is, uh, maintenance. Um, engineering works on project development and implementation of projects. So that's your bigger capital improvement, um, projects and then review of, uh, private projects. Uh, we have, uh, in addition to myself, uh, we have two licensed civil engineers on staff. Um, and then we also have a technician, uh, two analysts and a public works inspector position, um, that is funded that at the moment is, uh, filled with contractor, um, help. Um, and then the maintenance side of the building, um, is under the supervision of our public work superintendent, Bob Quinn. Um, they deal with the routine or the annual, the reoccurring, uh, maintenance, uh, on the streets and in the parks and in the buildings. Um, there are four maintenance worker ones and two maintenance worker twos, um, in that division. And so overall, uh, as I mentioned, um, in addition to the, um, the bigger projects, we also review and oversee, um, private improvements such as when residents, uh, wanna take out encroachment permits. So, uh, if they wanna make improvements to their driveways or something that touches the public right of way, then they need an encroachment permit, uh, from the city. Or if they're, uh, moving dirt on their property, they need a grading permit, which a public works reviews. Uh, we also respond to citizen, um, inquiries. If somebody calls and wants to know why there's no stop sign at an intersection or they wanna call and tell us a tree, uh, fell over, um, we do have a widget on our website and an email, publicworks@cityoflarkspur.org, that we take those requests in and we, uh, process them. Uh, we also work with some of our neighboring agencies and some of the regional agencies on, uh, some bigger projects. Um, as you know, we're working on the, um, on the southern, on the southern part of the northern segment of the north south greenway. At the moment, over on old north, old, uh, Redwood Highway. Um, that's a project that, uh, we've been working on with the Transportation Authority of Marin and the County of Marin and Corden Madera for many, many years before, um, I was here. Um, and we happen to be implementing, uh, this phase of it, uh, now. But we've worked, um, heavily with, uh, TAM, with Transportation Authority of Marin on getting that project to where it is, um, today. Uh, we also oversee enforcement of the, uh, clean water permit. So, uh, the city's, uh, part, uh, we work with McStop, which is, um, a division of county public works. Uh, this is going around to building sites and making sure that, uh, we don't have dirt and runoff, uh, that enters the streets and gets into the storm drains and into the streets. Um, and then, as I mentioned, we do also review new developments. So, um, when people are looking to redevelop, uh, not just, uh, tear downs and rebuilds of single buildings, but people that are looking to subdivide, uh, property and make improvements, we review those plans and work with, uh, building and planning, um, on that process of new development. And then lastly, uh, the larger projects, we do develop the capital improvement program. It's a five year plan. We review it every year. Um, and then we go through and implement, um, those projects on the, on the five year schedule. Um, so I'm gonna go over some accomplishments from last year. And so what I've done here, uh, that I started doing last year was I'm gonna show you the goals when I was here before you the year before and what I said we were hoping to, uh, achieve in twenty three, twenty four. And for the accomplishments, I'm gonna show you how we fared on last year's, uh, goals. Uh, so we were hoping to get through the mitigation project. And so we got about eighty five percent through that project and we've run into some permitting issues. And the last remaining piece of it is on hold. Uh, we did manage to install two new public docks at Bonner Landing Park in the Marin, uh, next to the Marin, um, rowing club. Um, and then we did some stormwater improvements on a ditch, uh, Magnolia. Uh, we also did some landscaping and ADA improvements out of Bonner Landing Park and we built a new dog park. Uh, we ran into issues with decommissioning the old dog park. And so that part of the project, uh, is not complete at the moment. We have some permit hoops to, to jump through to, uh, finalize that project. But overall, it's about eighty five percent complete. We were hoping to finish the measure B five year paving plan and we got really close. Um, we have one street left, actually one and a half streets, uh, Monte Vista, uh, behind us. And, um, a little piece of King Street are still left to be paved. As soon as PG&E replaced their gas line, we'll be out there, uh, paving those last streets, um, hopefully this summer. Um, and then north south greenway construction that I mentioned before, I'm giving myself a check mark for completing this because I'm pretty sure it'll be finished by June thirtieth of this year. Um, they've got everything finished except for the final, um, paving. They're gonna be repaving the street and the new path. All the new curbs are in, um, all the foundations. We were able to add, uh, some path lighting, uh, fortunately to this project. So, um, it should be paved next week and then we have to wait about another month for the, uh, lights to come in, um, on that project. Um, the Elm, uh, pathway, it's actually a staircase that we're building on the upper Elm pathway. Um, this is another project where we ran into a PG&E line, um, where we didn't think it was. Um, and so we're waiting for PG&E to relocate that gas line and then we'll get back on that project. It was awarded to a contractor. So, uh, they're standing by waiting for PG&E to complete their work before they can finish. Uh, phase two crosswalk improvements, we did some more crosswalk work this year. We've still got money left in that. And we're hoping to wrap up the last few crosswalk improvements, um, as part of that project. Uh, the lagoon inlet gate replacement, this is out at the Larkspur Marina. Um, we have some gates that need to be replaced that are inside big vaults in the street. Uh, and as part of that, we need to clean the pipes out and we need permits for that. And we haven't got those permits yet. So that, uh, project unfortunately has also been, um, delayed. And then our storm drain projects, we passed, um, two, uh, storm drain projects in the CIP, uh, funded with the ARPA funds. Um, the phase one project, we went out to bid and unfortunately no contractors bid on that project. So, uh, we've been working with the, um, with some local contractors and, um, with the public contract code. Once we've bid a project out, if we don't have bidders, then we're relieved of the public bidding. And now we can go and negotiate contracts with, um, uh, contractors to get some of that work complete. So we've got about forty percent of that project now awarded to contractors and about twenty percent of it is, uh, complete. And then following up on that, um, later, um, this year, uh, we'll be before you with, um, a contract for the phase two project and looking to award that to a contractor before the end of this, um, calendar year. And these projects so far are all a combination of spot repairs and lining of the pipes. So we haven't come across anything yet where we have to dig up any of our newly paved streets. So. Um, these are two of the streets that we paved this last year. Um, the photo on the left is Piedmont Court. Uh, and then on the right, this is Shady Lane. And I include this one. This is our only concrete street in town. Um, and so this, uh, was a standalone, uh, project. And so those were both, uh, those were the last streets that were done, uh, before we get to, uh, Monte Vista and King.
Why, can I just ask, why is it con, the, why is it concrete?
Um, there's a couple of reasons. Um, the main, um, reason was because of its, um, location and the fact that there's a lot of natural springs and drainage that run through there. And the underlying, uh, soil wasn't very good. And so, um, even though there's, uh, we actually did add a storm drain into Shady Lane when we did the project. But, um, it's still at the, um, at the bottom of, um, a ravine where it could get a lot of water. And over the time, part of, um, what can, uh, wear out a street as well as traffic is water running over it over time. It gradually takes the particles away. And so, working with our consultants, we looked at both options. Um, but we would have needed a really thick section of asphalt based on the quality of the soil underneath. But also it would have worn out prematurely if we would have done it in asphalt because of all the water we anticipated to be running over it. Um, so it costs about twice as much as asphalt, but it should last three to four times as long. So. Uh, and then this is a photo from when they were installing the new dock. Um, and I apologize, I should have had before photos, but the old dock, uh, by the rowing club was wooden and was dilapidated and was, uh, fenced off for safety reasons. And so, uh, they floated in a new aluminum, um, dock, uh, similar to the one at Bonner Landing Park. And that was, uh, done this year as part of the Bonner Bridge mitigation projects. Uh, going back to the paving, um, this is our PCI over the years, going back to, um, twenty eighteen. It was lower than that, but this is as far back as the graph that's in the report goes. Uh, we were down in the forties. At one point, we are now at eighty nine. That's our PCI. Um, it'll eventually get reported that high once MTC's three year average, um, catches up with where we were at. But the other thing I wanted to, uh, show here is the, the smaller chart on the lower right shows that ninety nine percent of the city's streets are in the very good condition, um, which is the eighty and above. So we only have one percent under right here, uh, streets that aren't in that very good condition anymore.
Congratulations on that.
Um, so this is, uh, continuing on from our goals, um, and how we did. So there's a couple of check marks on this sheet, which means we completed them. One was initiating the project to replace the Heather Garden Storm Drain Pump Station. So we're working with the Ross Valley Sanitary on a joint project because half of the building is a sewer pump station and half of it is a storm drain. So we're going to completely replace that facility, uh, separate a little better the, the two, um, pump stations over there. And so, uh, we're working with, um, a consultant right now and they're at about a ninety five percent, um, design phase on that. And then we were able to work around a PG&E an issue, issue that we thought we had that shaved about a whole year off of that project development. So we're thinking that project will actually go out to bid this summer, uh, to replace that pump station. Uh, but the goal for this year was to initiate the project. So, uh, that was complete. Uh, storm drain pump station upgrades, you authorize some ARPA money to do some upgrades at the other pump stations that we're not, uh, replacing. And so we've already issued a couple of contracts and we have some work already started at those. And most of those upgrades are in the electronics and in the telemetry. So, um, that if there's something going wrong with a pump station, we get an alarm. Say if it's on a weekend, we can try and troubleshoot it through an app on a phone versus somebody having to drive all the way in and look at the, uh, pump station and see what's wrong. Um, and then we did award the design build contract for the new library and community space. Uh, we, um, have started studying the options for renovating a city hall. We hope at your next meeting or maybe the one after will be before you with an item to consider awarding, um, a contract to an architect and structural engineer to start the evaluation, the technical evaluation of this building and what our renovation options, uh, would look like. Uh, we were able to rebuild Oliver Park Playground after it was taken out by a tree during a storm. And, uh, the other good news about that story, um, is that we were able to get FEMA funding to cover. Um, as you recall, you authorized general fund, uh, to pay for that playground, uh, rebuild. And we did say we were going to, uh, look for FEMA funding and we were able to get FEMA funding for that replacement. Uh, the new park sign installation is a while back. You did approve, uh, park signs and we've rolled them out as we've been improving the parks and we've got about four to go. And so at this point, we just wanted to get the last four done. So, um, those are in production now and the signs should be installed this summer. Uh, we're always looking at, uh, shared services with, uh, neighboring agencies. So that's gonna be a, a continuing, ongoing. Um, as I mentioned, we did work with Ross Valley, uh, on our storm drain projects, uh, rather than hiring a contractor. We worked with Ross Valley and they did a lot of the video inspections, uh, for our sewers. But.
Julian, can I ask you about the repaving Piper Park, um, parking lot? When we repaved, um, the Ward Street parking lot, there was an, uh, sort of an assessment. I remember Alvin doing it in which we made sure to maximize the amount of, um, utilization of that, a lot for parking and ADA, et cetera. And, um, are we doing that also for the Piper Park to make sure that we're maximizing the parking usage there? Cause it's often very full.
Yes, we will. But, uh, based on our preliminary evaluation, it's already striped for the maximum parking. Um, as you recall, the downtown parking lot was diagonal parking before and we were able to gain spaces by making those perpendicular. Piper already has perpendicular, uh, parking stalls. Uh, but there may be a few tweaks. I mean, it will be completely repaved, so it will be completely restriped. So we have some flexibility. Uh, we will also be looking at the drainage and see if there's some tweaks we can make to the drainage. Cause ultimately, one of the reasons why it's so bad is the drainage is really poor. It's flat and it's sunk in some areas. And it has catch basins, um, that are not necessarily in the right place.
Will it also involve, um, relocating the sandbag, um, depository area? That takes up of two or three parking spots now?
Um, I haven't looked at that yet, but I can, we can see if that's feasible within the, within the project. Are you meaning to outside of the parking lot to free up parking space?
Just free up parking spots. I mean, I, I, I'm not the expert in this, but I, when I walk through there, there's, there are some parking spots that are taken up by sandbag, um, distribution area. And I don't know another appropriate place for it. But, and there's also a couple of old public works cars in there that take up a parking spot. So I just wanna make sure we're assessing all the opportunities to, uh, maximize parking in there. Cause as Nick knows, it's often crazy on weekends trying to find parking in there.
Okay, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Um, where's my next one? This was, um, okay, I think that was the last of the accomplishments. Um, and so. Um, and so um, a chat a little bit about the goals for the upcoming year. So obviously, while we want to complete all of the projects that I listed that we didn't quite uh, get through in the, in the current year. They're listed, uh, they're, they're ones I already went over. Um, and then um, we're looking to start the construction on the new library and community space. So as I mentioned, we've awarded a design build contract, we're working on the design phase now. And we're um, expecting the construction to start this calendar year uh, towards the end of this calendar year. Uh, but definitely this uh, fiscal year. Uh, and then some of the other things that you'll see listed here are a preview of what you'll see when I present the proposed capital improvement program budget to you in a couple of uh, meetings. Um, some of these items here uh, are proposed to be projects and we'll go over the, the funding at the time we do the uh, capital improvement program. Uh, but we are looking at uh, some improvements to the hall, middle school gym, so that we can use it as a resiliency um, center. Uh, we're looking at making some improvements to the railroad building that I mentioned earlier. We do have storage out there, the building is not necessarily weather tight. And there are some potential improvements we could make inside the building to make the storage a little bit more efficient. So uh, we're going to have an architect, um, and a structural engineer look at that building and see what opportunities uh, we have to make improvements there. Um, and uh, the uh, the study of four hundred Magnolia City Hall, uh, it looks like the timeline for that is about eight or nine months. So we're anticipating finishing that process in the coming fiscal year. Um, Niven Park improvements, um, as you know, we shifted a little bit and we moved where the playground was going to be in that park. And so uh, we're getting the new site uh, re-surveyed, uh, waiting for the park to dry up a little bit. And then those improvements uh, will start this fiscal year and will be finished uh, in next fiscal year. Um, we did some drainage improvements up in the Corte Leho and Villa La Paz area of the Greenberry Hills. We've got a little piece of that project still to finish um, off on uh, Villa La Paz that we'll get done this year. And then when I mentioned the north-south Greenway, uh, we are looking at, once we complete that project and it brings that new class one bike path all the way down to industrial. Then there is a gap from industrial down to Warnham. Uh, Corte Madera have received um, A T P funding to install bike facilities on Warnham. And so we are going to be looking to some grants uh, to help uh, pay to design and fund what would be the continuation of the path we're building now on Redwood uh, down to meet Corte Madera's improvements that they'll be building um, on Warnham. And uh, we, the city actually was selected by the Transportation Authority of Marin. Um, they will be paying for our grant application to apply for A T P grants uh, for that project. Uh, so just a couple of photo slides here, again, this is um, this is the um, what was included in Nolan Tam and Alton's proposal for the, for the library that we're going to be working on. Uh, and then some more uh, goals here, as we finish paving all of our streets, we're going to move over into pavement maintenance mode. So um, if you're out and you see one of our engineers, Alvin Tan, walking around in a orange vest. He's looking at all the streets that we've paved going back ten years ago and evaluating them for most likely what we'll be doing next in our streets is some crack ceiling. Um, so addressing these streets in that five to ten year, even up to fifteen year age, when you can fix things with crack ceiling or a light slurry seal or digging out a little area that's bad. Uh, will save us from having to repave that street in five years. It'll push that repaving further out, so it's very important that we uh, keep spending our maintenance funds and we uh, address the streets before they get in too bad of a shape. So uh, probably later this summer, uh, will be before you with a package to go out to bid to do some crack ceiling and maybe some slurry ceiling and some spot repairs. Um, the next storm drain pump station we'd like to work on is Larkspur Plaza Drive. Um, this is an older, smaller pump station and there's a uh, an ineffective flood wall next to Larkspur Plaza Drive that we'd like to reinforce uh, for folks that live out there. Every time we get rain and high tides, the intersection of Creekside and Larkspur Plaza Drive floods, even though there's a pump station there, so we're looking to make some um, improvements there so that that wouldn't happen. Um, so as I mentioned before, Heatherwood's the first pump station that we're looking to improve. Uh, we're looking at Larkspur Plaza Drive uh, next, so we'll be looking to kick off that project. Um, it is right next to the creek, there'll be a lot of environmental reviews. So we'll probably be asking for you to fund the, the beginning process of that, working on permits. Uh, we're looking to implement a wave finding sign program, so this would be signs at the entrance to the city. Um, and then at certain points throughout the city that guide folks to North Magnolia or Downtown Magnolia or um, whatever comes out of our public process, when we add, ask folks what would they like to see in a wave finding program.
Are you going to use a consult, uh, like a wave finding company to do that?
We will at some point, uh, we haven't determined yet, we've done a lot, we've already started working um, on the backbones of this in-house to kind of put together what the process would look like. So at some point along the road, we'll bring a consultant on and you can either bring them on to help the process. And uh, some of those firms actually also have an arm that actually manufacture the signs.
Yeah, I used to see them and when I go to the Cal Cities um, conferences, they have a couple of really good wayfinding companies that that's exactly what they do is they, you know, they, they create the signage and install it, but that's good. I'm looking forward to that because I think a lot of cities have really attractive wayfinding.
Um, and then the next here is a corridor study for North Magnolia. So I mentioned before the citizen requests, one of the most common requests we get um, is for Magnolia Avenue. And we get them on both ends of the spectrum, we get, it's gridlock, I can't get through, I need to get through quicker. This is the main corridor through town. And the other questions I get is people are driving too fast, I can't get across the street on the crosswalk. So um, it is a little unique, um, and then it has a lot of crosswalks, um, is a very local feel, but it is the major north-south through the, the city. So uh, we're going to look at some of those areas, uh, we're looking at hiring a traffic consultant to look at the, we're doing the north basically. So uh, we'll start just at the Creekside intersection and go all the way up to the city-county line. Um, and then he'll look at a couple of options for how the street should be considered, uh, configured. Uh, where the crosswalks are, what the intersection treatments are, how we should best accommodate bicycles and pedestrians and vehicles along there. Um, so we're not asking to do anything, we're just asking to get some feedback and some information from a traffic consultant on what, what we could do to address some of the concerns that we're getting from the public. Um, the next one is replacing a valve at the Redwood Pump Station. It doesn't sound like a capital improvement program, but this valve work is over a hundred thousand dollars. It's a pretty significant piece of the pump station that needs to be replaced. It broke a few years ago and we've been doing repairs and repairs and repairs, but it's just not feasible anymore. So uh, we're going to have to replace that. Um, a lot of the streetlights up in the Greenberry Hills and the Bon Air Hill area are old metal poles that are painted. Um, and depending on how old the pole is, they're either gold or green or a combination because the paint's been fading over the time and it's not just an aesthetic issue. If the paint uh, fades too much, then the poles can rust out and have to be replaced or could conceivably be a safety hazard if the pole fails. So uh, we have enough of these now where we feel we need to do something and we need to hire a contractor to comprehensively uh, repaint uh, a significant number of our city's streetlights. Um, the next project is um, part of our trash capture uh, program that we've talked to you about before. Under our clean water uh, permit, we have until twenty thirty to uh, capture a certain amount of a trash that comes out of our storm drains. Um, and at this time, um, McStop actually received an E P A grant to start planning some of these projects on behalf of the agencies. And at the same time, Caltrans has received money uh, to implement cat, trash capture devices. And the way it works with Caltrans is if a public agency wants to install a trash capture device and it covers a little piece of the freeway, then Caltrans will contribute funds to that project. So between the E P A grant uh, and the Caltrans contribution, we have an opportunity here to handle a, a big chunk of our trash capture needs at no cost uh, to the city. So uh, we'll be looking at moving that project forward next year.
Julian, I thought I knew everything, but where is Black Kettle Lagoon? I've never heard of Black Kettle Lagoon.
No, you're not wrong, so technically, Black Kettle Lagoon is in Corte Madera, which is um.
Is that the one by the motel?
It is behind Lucky and Pfeiffer.
Oh, by that old fabric, I mean.
Kind of behind, is it twenty-four hour?
By Big Five, by Big Five.
S F Fitness.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know where it is.
Yeah, it's not very visible and not if you're in Larkspur, but uh, what it is, is a lot of the industrial and rich area that's in Larkspur. That drainage goes across the freeway and goes into Black Kettle, so it's Larkspur drainage that we're treating. Um, but this trash capture device will probably end up being in Corte Madera, but it will be a Larkspur project because it's handling and we will get the credit for it.
I know where that is now, I just didn't know it had that name.
Yep.
I wonder why.
Um, and then the next one is a King Street Wing Wall Replacement. So a wing wall is a retaining wall that's attached to a bridge or a culvert. Usually see them at the entrance and they're there to hold the soil back, so the sides of the road don't fall in and block the bridge. So um, over at King Street, uh, right where it meets Monte Vista, one of the wing walls is falling over. Um, so it needs to be replaced. And again, um, this project will take about two years in permits and probably about four weeks in construction. But that's, it's on the books. Um, and then Larkspur Creeks Bank Stabilization, we had a creek bank failure during last year's winter storms that's close to the bike path that runs just south of the Rose, just east of the Rose Lane um, development. So again, we've got FEMA funding, um, but this will have to go through all of the permit cycles to, to replace that uh, creek bank. Uh, we're looking to update the eighty-eight uh, transition plan. And as part of that, we're going to look into some um, H friendly programs and work that uh, into the document or as a second, separate document, but have that as part of uh, one process. Uh, we're currently working with both the Larkspur Marina Property Owners Association and the Larkspur Marina Finance Authority for two upcoming projects that they have that are not city projects. But there's public funding involved and so Public Works has a, has a role and the city has a role um, in um, those projects moving forward. One is for the dredging of the creek and the other is for replacing the, the bulkhead around the lagoon. And then we'll be working with Nick Stone and Parks and Recreation on uh, the Piper Park visioning that we are, are looking to do upcoming. I don't want to steal Nick's thunder if he's got this on his list, but I'll, I'll leave it to Nick. Um, and then I've got on here again, continue to explore um, shared services, I think. Um, you know, as we get into the operating discussions later on, you're going to see a lot of um, what we're doing. The costs are, are increasing and uh, we're going to continue to look for uh, ways to, to share with some of our neighboring agencies that are going through the same things, whether it's equipment or personnel or uh, or technology. Um, still going to be looking forward to doing some of that. That's the Larkspur Creek Bank that failed. Um, and then quickly, maintenance, I'm probably going way over ten minutes here. Um, so maintenance crew, it was very engineering heavy, but the maintenance crew did a lot of work uh, helping us uh, inspect our storm drain projects as well as R V S D. Uh, they worked on all of the FEMA and Cal O E S paperwork that got us all that funding uh, for all of the storm damage. Uh, they've completed a tree inventory and they're working now on getting our priority trees removed or pruned as Arboris recommends. Pot hair, uh, pothole repairs went down because of all the streets. Um, and then they did work with the Larkspur Community Foundation, we replanted the downtown parking lot. Uh, there's one of our bad potholes in Piper Park. Uh, and then here's a shot of the uh, dog park here, uh, which is why I want to talk about goals is um, we have a lot of added assets which are great. We had all the new median planting on Bon Air Road, we've got a brand new Bon Air Park. Uh, but all of these things are going to need to be maintained over the year. So we need to fold these into our routine uh, maintenance plan and make sure that we uh, have a space for them. Um, and then uh, we will be working on looking at a computer uh, maintenance monitoring system, management system. So this is taking all of our assets, getting them in a database, um, so that we're able to um, schedule the repairs um, and routine maintenance on them. Um, and then uh, we envisioned that there'll be some opportunity for the maintenance side of the house to help out as we move into pavement maintenance. Um, now that we're going to be doing some crack ceiling and some digouts, there may be some opportunity for the maintenance uh, side of the building to participate in some of that roadway treatment. Um, and then we're going to look, we had to close the new dog park this year because the turf got really wet and it rained. And then when we thought we could open it up again, it rained again. Uh, so we're going to take a look and see if there's something we can do a little different there, uh, because we would like to keep that open. Other than the days when it actually rains, our, our goal is to uh, to try and make that available. Um, and then another challenge in maintenance is we've got utility rate increases, P G N E and uh, Marin Water, both twenty-five to thirty percent increases that we'll have to figure out. There's not so much we can do to save on power, we have to keep the lights on, uh, and obviously watering, we can reduce uh, watering. But if these rates continue to go up over, over time, it's going to become uh, more of an issue and that's all I have, so. Available for it, any question?
One breath.
Already asked all my questions.
Very thorough, Julian, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a request, if you don't mind. Um, I, I think you sit in a very unique seat in terms of um, being able to implement some of our climate goals. Um, a lot of our emissions are due to transportation and streets and also just building design. So um, I would ask that as you're working on some of these projects, particularly the library, but also looking at traffic flow, um, to keep in mind, you know, maybe think just strategically about how the city can do a better job in terms of either reducing um, vehicle miles traveled. I know that's an outdated term, but you know, we, reducing the amount of um, you know, single passenger car use um, to the extent that we can implement um, strategies that help relieve congestion and time spent in cars waiting, you know, in traffic. I like the roundabout idea and I will keep bringing that up. Um, but, but I, I, I think that, you know, also this kind of ties in with um, the housing emblems plan. So you know, we're going to have to build more, there will be more people, we need to design our infrastructure to accommodate that. And so to the extent that as you're, we're working through some of these projects, I would ask that you kind of put on that type of lens and perspective for us, especially as we're thinking about, you know, the library and the design and the construction there in terms of what we can do in terms of greener technology. Um, again, conserving water, reducing um, our utility bill, that sort of thing. Um, I think that would be very helpful, thank you.
No, I've already asked one.
Yeah, um, well, first, uh, Julian, I want to thank you. I, I think I listed thirty-six things you're working on, it's like, how many balls can you juggle? Um, uh, but, but my kind of typical question is, you know, in those thirty-six items, you know, clearly some of them are multi-year. Um, you know, what are the priorities? Like, you know, it would be a fair question to ask you what the top five or, you know, top, you know, seven like of, of those are. And, and um, and, and then as a follow-up question, to what extent council can influence those priorities? Like I think, you know, um, Stephanie's point of anything like, like one item is adapt to utility rate increases. So if that has a climate impact, you know, we can ask, you know, for more time, money or, or energy to put into that. But, but you know, once we understand your priorities, to what extent can we, based on constituent input and, and that, you know, try to influence, because I know that some of these things are probably set, like you, you have a certain planning cycle and it's not something we can change priorities.
So I mean, as far as priorities, one of the biggest priorities is um, following the, the funding deadlines. And so when you look at that list, uh, completing the library project, um, getting the storm drain projects done, those have funding attached to them that have deadlines. So those are things that we have weekly meetings on to make sure that they stay on track and they've got to get um, checked off um, the list. It's hard to put a priority on everything else. Sometimes, you know, things change and understand that what may be a priority to somebody that's calling in about a, you know, a crosswalk, um, you know, versus uh, looking at some other uh, retaining wall fix um, or whatever. A lot of it goes with um, what we have staff capacity for. And there are some projects that we have to let out to consultants and they will drive the timeline. Like for example, the Magnolia Avenue Study is something we need a traffic engineer on board for. So we're going to have to go find a traffic engineer, we're going to have to go through a public process where we get some feedback on, on the corridor and that will kind of drive um, the timeline also. Um, but I can't, other than, other than the things that have those funding deadlines, those are the things that I kind of pay the, pay the most attention to, because we don't, we don't want to have to give money back.
So, so sorry, um, Dan, so library is one and then storm drains, are there some, yeah?
So we don't overly burden Julian and we make sure we, I, I don't, I don't want the public to be confused. We don't decide a lot of what you're asking. The council may need to remind, be reminded that in twenty nineteen, we revisited the twenty fifty plan, which is the council's guidance on priorities for major infrastructure projects. What we do uh, is work on the availability of money, because the plan says shift the priorities of monies. What we do uh, is work on the availability of money because the plan says shift the priorities of monies become available. But these are the priorities of the community. You are the guardians of the priorities of, of the community's money and projects. And so that plan is actually where we look to, to figure out what to do to go pursue things. The only time we can waive your policies and your guidance is when health and safety is concerned and we have to make decisions along those lines. And even the matters of where a crosswalk goes, you adopted the plan that we brought you. We made recommendations, but you considered the community's interests and adopted a plan that guides infrastructure decisions around how we prioritize. Uh, sideways. You adopted the Climate Action Plan. You told us how to, to in, fold that consideration into the priorities of the city. You have conflicting policies that you have to look at. The challenge, Julian, to me, when we look at these questions, one that you're going to wrestle with for the next couple of years is. What's the value of money? What's the value of water use? Uh, and what is the value of grass in your parks? Because we're, those are conflicting policy goals and we're headed to a, a discussion, I think, as a community. Because those are becoming heightened challenges in all three categories. But I don't want this conversation or your questions to suggest to the public that, that, that we make some of those big ticket decisions. Um, and I really encourage folks, if you haven't looked at it, to look at the twenty eighteen update of the twenty fifty plan to familiarize yourself with. What the council established and if the council ever wants to revisit that plan, we're more than happy to take that direction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do you have other questions?
Uh, no, that's, that's, that was really nice presentation. Thanks for all the detail, Julian.
Dan, sorry, um, so a follow-up to what you just said, then would it be appropriate then to perhaps ask that the department heads? Um, maybe in subsequent meetings, um, give us a um, a status of where we are versus, for instance, the Climate Action Plan. Or the other plan, you know, it, it would be helpful to see, you know, here's what we've done. And by the way, these were, you know, these were the goals. I'm, I'm familiar with the Climate Action Plan because I, that's, yeah. It's, it's something that I'm interested in and I've read, but you know, to the extent that there, you know, it'd be helpful if the department heads can maybe lay that out. As they're making these presentations to us so that we can kind of see, oh, well, this is, you know, this, this is the priority. And this is what we're doing to fulfill that. It'd be helpful to get that status.
Certainly, whenever we make a choice that's relative to one of your plans, we provide a reference so that you understand what guiding principle led your staff. To do something. Um, some plans, we have direct instruction from the council to do regular updates. Climate Action Plan is a great example. You get an annual update on what progress we've made. The twenty fifty plan, I'm happy to bring it back to you, but it, it's a little more challenging because it's these huge big ticket projects like fixing this building. And doing the library. And so um, those updates are, you know, we're, we're making the slow, steady project. Where the, the big ticket one. Um, I think a good example though of your request is the roads. I mean, I think anybody who's watched a lot of council meetings knows we sort of beat up the council with updates on the road repair. Because that was a really dynamic plan, but can certainly um, you know, redouble our efforts. So reference back to the plans that you've adopted that are guiding us in decisions.
All right, I, hey, um, before you go, I got one comment. First of all, Julian, I'd say thank you um, for the presentation. And my comment is, I think we live in a fantastic city and. The people responsible for that, a lot of them are in this room right now, you know, it's, it's rare that we have all the department heads sitting here. And, and I just, I'm looking around the room and I, I just want to say thank you, you know, on, on behalf of, of council and, and everybody else in the community. You know, you are what makes this or what makes this city so great. Um, your efficiency, your uh, the way you work well together, the way you work well with the, the council. And you are all really appreciated. And I just, while Julian was thinking, was talking, I was just looking around the room and it just, uh, just hit me. I just wanted to say thank you. That's all.
And as you leave, I just have to comment, that was you being brief, right? I, I was sort of struck because I said we were going to go in seniority order and I realized uh, there's a pretty significant gap now. Because um, Julian's been with us for quite a while, uh, relative to a lot of our other department heads. So I think Elise, you are the next most senior department head. Uh, Nick's, Nick's had more tenure in the city, but I think Elise spent it, or a department head longer.
I was expecting Nick to go next. Mine will be short. So our department consists of six staff, uh, myself, we have a building official, a permit tech and two planners. And an administrative assistant that's shared between building and planning. And we, we're doing statistics for this, the calendar year of two thousand twenty-three, since we haven't completed um, the fiscal year yet. But in two thousand twenty-three, we had an increase in building permits and issued permits for eighteen new housing units. Which were all accessory dwelling units. There was an increase in resale inspection reports, but the prior year there was a thirty-one percent decrease. So I think this is actually a more um, normal level for our resale reports. And then the planning applications were up as well as the tree removal permits. And the most significant project that you'll remember was the Magnolia Village Project that had five appeals that you considered. And that project was approved and they're, they've been talking to our building department staff about pulling permits. So we do expect them to pull permit for that project soon. The Planning Commission, so a lot of, if you see considering the thirty-eight planning applications, some of those have been approved this year. Um, some of them were approved by the Planning Commission and the Zoning Administrator, but a lot of those were handled at an administrative level. And our code enforcement cases just continue to roll in at a steady pace. We have a three-day-a-week contract code enforcement staff person who is working on trying to resolve them as they come in. So ninety-one cases were closed, a hundred and thirty-seven were open and we're at about eighty code cases right now that, that they're working on. And that, um, that work takes a lot of time because they have to essentially pester the people to come in for permits. And then once they come in for permits, you have to keep following up to make sure they actually complete the work or pull the permits and then final the permit. So um, it's sort of intensive time and needs, uh, and a lot of the applicants need a lot of handholding through the process. So we really appreciate having that, that part-time staff person on contract. The building permit valuations were about fifty-three and a half million dollars this year, which was down from last year. But last year was a particularly high year because there was a lot of high-value commercial projects that had come in. This year, the highest value projects were primarily single-family residential projects. There was a few new homes and then a few really um, high-value remodel projects. And our accomplishments for the fiscal year was um, hiring Bill Hanslow as the in-house chief building official. And so now we could do more of the plan checks in-house and he's exploring means to reduce the cost of outside plan checks. We'll probably be putting a RFP out for plan check services to see what other options are, are available and, and the cost of those. He's also done a great improvement in coordinating the building permit process between departments as well as outside agencies. So he's meeting regularly or the staff is meeting regularly with him uh, with fire and public works and others that are involved in the building permit process. To um, make sure everyone's communicating well, as well as with outside agencies like environmental health and the water district and um, sewer agency. He's building and even the county assessor, he's building relationships with all the other agencies that we're working with to try to improve our process, make it more efficient. And also just so that we um, guide applicants in a way that keeps them from having a painful building application process or, or. Construction project. For planning, the city adopted the objective design and development standards for multifamily property and also the vehicle miles traveled policy. There was an update to the commercial, uh, where there's a new commercial linkage fee adopted as well as an update to our inclusionary housing fee and inclusionary housing policy. And then there was a number of ordinances that I didn't list here that um, responded to various state laws and housing laws. That were adopted in this prior fiscal year. For goals for the upcoming year, our, our primary goal is to improve customer service and the experience on Central Square. Last year, we spent most of the time setting up our new building permit program and that, that's known like by the public as E-Track It. And this year, we'd just like to refine that to make it easier for people to use and um. And also improve our customer service here in-house by expanding our hours and also um, just promoting to the public. That even though we're only open certain days, that we're available all week long to help them and that they're free, free to call and email and make appointments. Um, just know that we, we're not just only open certain, a few hours, a couple of days a week. We also are going to be promoting a pre-application process to try to help businesses avoid some of the headache that they've, we've seen them experience with trying to open. To encourage property owners to encourage potential tenants to talk to us before they ever sign a lease. So that we could give them um, visit the site with them, give them a heads up as to things that might come up in terms of fire separation or sprinkler requirements. Based on what they're proposing to do or ADA accessibility issues. And so we're going to try to promote that with the property owners as well as, uh, we've already. Started uh, promoting that with the major shopping centers with country, Marine Country Mart in Bon Air. Because um, just to ensure that they're, the pro, the process of opening a business is smoother for them. And we could do that if we are in contact with them really early on and know what they're planning to do. And then next year, we'd be implementing the housing element programs. So I didn't put that as an accomplishment this year because it's not done yet. But my hope is that the ordinance that adopts the rezoning will be done by your second meeting in July. And that everything else will take place prior to that. My hope is to have a, a response to HCD next week's. And then we'll be waiting on their comments and I'm hoping that they will, they will not take the full sixty days to respond, but since they've already reviewed it. And that also will hopefully get an okay to move forward and get it approved. And then um, we'll move it quick, as quickly as we can through planning and. And the city council to get it adopted. And then maybe the, it's possible that the, I wanted to have this come through with the ordinance that adopts all the rezoning. But since there's longer noticing requirements for the ordinance, we might just get at least the main documents adopted and then follow through with, or follow with the, the ordinance. Which has to be adopted at a regular meeting and you probably have heard that some of your meetings will be canceled. So we're working around all those dates. I think that's it for planning and building. If you have any questions for me.
All right, bring it back to council. Questions for staff?
Thank you, Elise and Bill. Um, so I, I wanted to ask a question about your, I, I like how you're, you know, meeting. Pre-application meetings with new businesses and also coordinating with other um, agencies and departments. Um, I would ask that in those meetings or if you're getting feedback from people, actual users of the process, process. You know, business owners who are trying to open um, a new business. Um, i- if there are parts of the code. Or the permitting process that appear to be overly burdensome or out of date. Um, that you bring those to our attention because I think that, you know, to the extent that we can help facilitate people. In, in opening businesses and making um, the process smoother for everyone, I, I think that, that's the end goal. So if we've got something, if we've got a piece of code or policy or, you know, that's, that's, that was written fifty years ago. And is no longer relevant. Um, but it's presenting a problem. Um, you know, please let us know. And we can bring it up for discussion. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Elise. What are um, some code enforcement examples? Are they?
They're primarily, I was going to make a chart of the most common ones for you, but they are primarily building their construction without permits.
Without permits.
That's, and then there's some other random ones, but primarily their construction without permits. And those, those um, also if they do come in for a permit, if it's not something that they have to remove and not get a permit for. Um, there is a. Two hundred percent penalty. So they pay double permit fees when they come in so we can recover some of the costs that it takes in um. Enforcing the building regulations.
Have we considered, and I've seen this in other communities where the permit has to be displayed at, at the um. At the road or visible from the road to be able to be read. So on a stand kind of maybe by the mailbox or by the road, because I walk a lot and I'm always looking for permits just because I'm one of those people. And sometimes they're really hard to see because they've posted it on the dwelling, but the, it may be all the way down a driveway. Or it may be kind of on the living room window and there's no way you can read it without entering someone's property. And I was always curious why we didn't have them where they were a bit uh, more accessible for uh, viewing and reading. Um, at the street level so that you don't actually enter someone's property to see it.
I don't know if, um, I don't know the answer to that, but that's a great idea. Yeah.
It's a requirement. Um, and it's just something that hasn't been enforced uh, because of lack of the enforcement officer. But it is something that the enforcement officer now is directed to do, and it's also a training exercise for contractors that, that you have to do this. And I'm doing the same thing as I go around.
Yeah.
If I don't see one, um, I'll ask for it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be great because there's been times I've actually asked you that I've noticed a lot of work being done and I don't see a permit anywhere. And I've asked you, like, do they have a permit? And they actually do, but it's sort of for me, the layperson walking on the road. It's actually tucked way over in a corner, posted so that it's visible from the road, but it's fifty feet away. So there's no way I can see if they actually have a timely permit, you know, so.
And, and on top of that, we're also now with more staff and attention and refinement of the system that we have. We're tracking the expirations a lot better um, so that we don't get far, far behind or things aren't, aren't final. Or they, you know, just sort of fade away. So we're really have gotten on top of that.
Good.
And we'll, we'll pursue making sure those permits are.
I probably would save a lot of phone calls too, if people actually could read it from the road surface as they walk by and see a project underway. And, and are curious about it. Because it is public record and they should be able to see that they, this individual has actually engaged in the permitting process. So, okay, thanks.
Yeah, um, Elise, a couple of questions. Um, on the uh, you know, the point you made, several ordinances adopted to comply. Um, we just got done with the, you know, item of rent control. Is that something that is part of your, you know. Planning for the upcoming year? Is that something that affects you?
Not, at, at least uh, to date, not, it hasn't affected my department.
He's looking over here saying, please don't let it affect my department. So we, we've kept that in administration. We haven't moved it to community development.
Okay, okay. And um, on the housing element programs, you know, some, that was sort of near and dear to my heart last year. I think, you know, I think transit-oriented housing was one of the programs we were looking at. I'm not sure.
Right, and the, the inventory still is really focused on having all the housing near transit. So all of the sites are at least on a transit line. I believe all of them are. And, but the majority are at Larkspur Landing near um, near the ferry and train. And bus service.
And I was wondering if you could just say a little bit more, you know, so uh, out of housing element programs, there was more than just that, right? So transit oriented was one.
There's a number of programs and a lot of them have been, have been knocked out while we've been waiting for the housing element. Drafts to be reviewed by the state. So um, some of them were just programs to, to make our ordinances in compliance with state law. Um, there's the ADU Center of Marin you had approved um. Entering into uh, with a, an agreement with other jurisdictions in Marin to um. Essentially, we've retained ADU Center of Marin to help uh, residents. With developing new accessory dwelling units and that is already um, taking place. So we could refer people there if anyone needs information. And they just had a workshop on Monday night with Larkspur residents. Um, like it was Larkspur, Cordera and. Sausalito and Bill, Bill attended um, to provide information. We heard there's about twenty-five people attending, although it sounded like it was heavy, more heavy on Cordera side. Um, other, there's, I can't, I think I'd have it memorized by now, but um, a lot of the other, the programs that are significant. Are just trying to get the housing constructed. So helping um. Processing the applications for the larger development projects. We have three, possibly four that are just waiting for the housing element to be adopted to, to come in. Those big projects are going to be time-consuming for staff, but it would actually result in housing units. So um, that's going to be a big part of the implementation. And then um, then there's a variety of other little things. Some of it's just um, just promoting more information on fair housing. So that everyone knows about the rent control ordinances or other um, other resources that are available to them. So that they um, can ma, stay in their, in their homes. Uh, and you'll, you'll be seeing them. You'll be seeing them soon.
Okay, thank you. Elise, thank you.
I've got nothing else.
I'm gonna use this opportunity really quickly to tease Public Works and Mr. Skinner, because I think community development and Public Works has been a competition to see who could try to fill the longstanding vacancies that we've had, two of them. So Bill being canceled, being now being on staff means Community Development finally filled its chief building official after four or five years trying to do that. Public Works inspector is probably on year six now of trying to make it work. So, you know, some of these jobs are really tough to fill. And it's my knowledge, Elise, finding Bill's been a great addition to our staff. So.
Great.
Okay, Nick, I do think now you probably are the the next longest in tenure as a department head.
This is no name, Dan.
Very proud to get this. Good evening. I'm Nick Stone, Recreation Director, and the third most senior department head at this point. Here we are here. This is the Recreation Department. This is our building. I'm very proud of the the green awning that we had put up a couple of years ago. And I'm there with, that is Gianni La Caruba, who started with us a couple of years ago as an admin assistant, who was split between working with the library part time and then also down at Recreation. And this year, we were able to promote him into a coordinator, a Recreation Coordinator role full time for us. And it's really been a great help for us. And he's been able to to start taking on a lot of the programming that that I've been doing for for years. Missing from this this photograph is our part time building attendant, Med Hani, who is the absolute absolute backbone of what we do. He works all the nights and weekends that 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 we're not out here. He keeps the gym running and the community room as well, works a lot with our community groups, and everybody in the community seems to know him. He also works as a custodian at Basage. So really keeps our operations running on nights and weekends. Also wanted to draw attention to the brochure that should have been mailed to you within the last month, but this is our first time back since 2019. We haven't done a recreation brochure since then. Traditionally, we had a much bigger brochure that had all the barcodes in it. It was kind of an old school way of of doing things. So I'm really, really happy with the way this turned out. This is a redesign and Gianni La Caruba took took this and worked with a graphic designer to to design this. And what's really cool about it, if you go through it, is that it draws attention to a lot of our community partners and and shows what they're doing. A lot of the camps that that are not under us that we run at Piper Park and Hall Middle School were spotlighted in this. And hopefully, help helping them be successful will help us be successful as well. So some of the programs that we are doing, we do a lot of after school classes at Basage Elementary and Hall Middle School, as well as in our building, one of the one of the building, one of the programs that we do a lot of is theater in our in our building. And right now, it's Peter Pan. So as Shannon can tell you, on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, after school, it is all songs. So it's really difficult to work in the afternoon, but but there's a ton of kids in and out, and it's it's a lot of fun for them. We also do, one of our bigger programs is adult and youth tennis classes. We have teams and stuff out at Piper as well. And we are going to start doing some pickleball lessons. Again, we haven't done pickleball lessons since 2019. So that's going to be coming back in the next few months. Picture down below, you'll see our Larkspur walkers. This is a volunteer driven program. And and down in the bottom left with some striped socks, you can see our lead volunteer, Mary Bowles. And you'll see the walkers out on Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, and occasional Saturdays from nine to 10:00. They do a perfectly timed one hour walk around town. There's a lot of history in this group, a lot of knowledge. So so a lot of things get passed down to people in this program. And it's it's great, because it's also lately has been a lot of generational people coming in. So there's a lot of, there's actually been grandkids of some of the current walkers that'll go out and walk with them. So it's great to see them around town. And one of the programs that I don't ever talk about it, and I just wanted to bring it up, was we we do offer pickup basketball at Hall Middle School on Sunday mornings for adults. And it's a it's a $5 drop in. And we have a volunteer that runs that program from from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, although I think they they start at 7:00 AM most of the time. But it's a it's a great, great little thing that we offer for adults that that I am bad about talking about. Some of the facilities, we have a JPA with the the school district, the Larkspur Cord Madera School District, and we run the Hall Middle School Synthetic Field, as well as the Hall Middle School Gym. We program these these facilities after as soon as school ends until about 10:00 PM most nights. Well, not the synthetic field, I say until dark on the synthetic field. But the Hall Middle School Gym until about 10:00 most nights a week. These are highly sought after facilities. People love them. I take pride in in us really scheduling them to the the max that we can. There's always somebody in the gym, and there is always somebody on the synthetic field, except for like Sunday nights. I can't find anybody on Sunday nights for the synthetic field. But but the the facilities are highly sought after, and the user groups appreciate them. We also, at Piper Park, we schedule the softball fields, the grass soccer field, volleyball courts, tennis courts, cricket pitch, and I'm missing, missing one. But so again, really heavily used facilities that the community really appreciates, and we make sure to use as much, schedule it as much as possible to to collect that revenue. One of the other facilities we oversee at Piper Park is the Community Garden. And I have a slide coming up about that. But in the Community Garden, we have, it's been 42 years, and it has been our lead volunteer, Stephen Connor, has been running it for the entire time. I think he's a four or five person or term Citizen of the Year for Larkspur. So really, really runs a tight ship. Every year, I get contacted by somebody in one of the other cities that has taken on a role in their in their city to oversee their community gardens. And so about once a year, I give a tour to somebody from another city. And the Larkspur Community Garden is really known as is kind of the pinnacle of what a community garden can be. And that's that is thanks to Stephen Connor and the volunteers that he leads. Events, we had a rough year on events this this year with the rain, but but we do, we do some really great events, some signature events. We brought back Music in the Park this year, this last summer, and ran four events in conjunction or sponsored by the Larkspur Community Foundation. And they ran May, June, July, and August. And we had some great bands out as a great community event where we're getting 200 to 300 people, and just a just a really good time, kind of a cool community feel on a on a Friday evening. We also run a couple of egg hunts that got canceled this year because of the rain. We do a flashlight egg hunt on the Friday on a Friday night. And you can see that picture down below. Tons of fun. It is pitch black. The kids have flashlights, starts at 8:30. And it is, we put out 5,000 eggs and a couple hundred kids pick those up, no joke, within about five minutes. They'll stay out there for another hour looking for eggs, but but they they really comb through. The other egg hunt we do is a Saturday morning egg hunt, and we partner with Cord Madera Parks and Rec to do that. We usually switch off locations. This year was scheduled at Town Park, and it was just a just a swamp out there this year. So we ended up canceling it. One of my favorite events, Night Lights, this was our second year doing Night Lights is sponsored by, this was great this year, as we had a bunch of different sponsors. Our main sponsors are the Commons Foundation and Larkspur Community Foundation. And this year, we expanded a little bit. We think we added about eight trees. And again, with the rain, it made it very difficult to keep those extended lights on in the in the afternoons. But we also, this year, we had such success, the previous year with the hot cocoa nights, that we we ran three hot cocoa nights this year. And it rained on every single one. It didn't rain, and it was just like, I think it was like 20 degrees. So it was, it was rough. But I'm not deterred. I think we're going to try that again, because because they have been really successful. And I just love cocoa. So partnerships has really been a staple of what we're doing the last couple of years. We up up top, you see a group, this is the Twin Cities Villages. They're doing a book club here. They have the Twin Cities Villages is an older dart, older adult organization that is under the Marin Villages umbrella. And they offer a lot of resources for for senior citizens in the community. We worked a lot with them pre-COVID, so 2018, 2019, and then everything went remote for them. And then this year, we have brought them back in from board meetings, as well as some art. This is a book club up here. So it's a it's a really great group of of people to come in and utilize the facility and a great, great partner. We also work with the Commons, the Commons Foundation to to run Night Lights, and that's been two years now. And down here, we have the Larkspur Community Foundation down here at the bottom, and that's Stephen Connor in the middle, as well as a few members of the Board of the Community Foundation. And they have helped out the Community Garden with a with an annual sponsorship of $500, as well as, as well as replacement of the dated sign that you see there. So coming up, we do have, right, we're in the middle of with regional government services. We're in a plan, a recreation plan for for a three and five year plan for the department to kind of map out the future for what that looks like, as well as developing a mission statement and vision statement for the department. So we had our first meeting two weeks ago, and we have a follow up meeting next week, and we'll hope to get a plan from there to present to you all. Coming up, May 3, we're working with a group, Operation Joy Lab approached us about doing a silent disco at Piper Park in the in the evening. So it'll be kind of a before sunset kind of dance party. If you've ever been to a silent disco, they're going to bring out headphones, and there'll be a few different channels, and really looking to to make a community event. It's kind of a one package that they kind of come out and do this. So I'm pretty excited about that to give it a shot. And a lot of energy around that with the with the people that are involved. Katia and Company Musical, Peter Pan is being presented May 18 through the 26th at the Civic Center. They switch off presenting between the Civic Center and the San Anselmo Playhouse. And then occasionally, they'll do shows at Hall Middle School as well. And finally, this year, Music in the Park is coming back. We have five dates this year. We're looking to to schedule them all in May and June to kind of keep up the continuity.
What's that, the mayor's band?
So I'm scheduling bands now. These are Friday nights from 6:00 to 8:00. And I encourage you guys to come out, because it is, it is a lot of fun. And we have some some good bands lined up. And yeah. Any questions?
Let's start down the end. We got any questions?
Thank you, Nick. Great presentation. And I think all the activities that you're putting off for the community, I think, is incredibly valuable, just to enhance the quality of life here within our community. I was just curious, do you do any sort of special outreach to maybe lower income families, or, you know, families who might not be able to afford, say, summer camp for their kids? And do we offer scholarships? Or is there money in the budget for that? I was just curious in terms of, is there, you know, is there special outreach for that for them?
Yeah, what's great over the last few years is all of the schools have have counselors that can really help us identify those students. And what's great about it is they actually can kind of handle it. They can kind of come to us and say, you know, mainly, you know, we have a kinder camp at Basage, for example, and they can they can identify people in the community and kind of take care of that that for us. So so in some instances, they'll pay registration for 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 a camp. And then in other cases, we can, we can cover it.
Catherine, Gabriel?
Yeah. So, Nick, yeah, first, I just wanted to thank you for the the strategic plan. You know, I think we got interviewed as council members, and it was encouraging, you know, to see the the kind of, you know, thinking and possible analysis and what can benefit our community. I do have to ask about pickleball. I was wondering if that's come up, because I it's funny knocking on so many doors. I heard pickleball more than once. And I'm curious if if that's that's part of your strategic plan.
Yes, that will, yes. So actually, tomorrow night at the the commission meeting, we have pickleballs on the agenda about whether to add striping to Court Four to increase pickleball tennis multi-use there. So that'll be on the agenda, that is on the agenda for tomorrow night. I will be increasing programming. Again, we used to offer pickleball lessons in 2019, and then it just kind of went away with COVID. And I've instructed our our tennis instructor now has subcontracted a pickleball slash youth tennis instructor that that kind of does both. And we're, we're really hoping that it can help bridge the gap between the the two groups using it. And that'll be a good segue into potential potential pickleball tournaments down the road as well.
Okay. And just a couple other, you know, these are minor questions, but in general, if there are program ideas, people know to go through you, and then you vet the programs and and, you know, are there lots of applications, you know, different people approaching you for, you know, activities? Or how does that pipeline look?
Not as many as they're used to. I think, I think, I keep bringing up COVID, and I don't like to, but but we used to get a ton of requests from from instructors to teach programs for us. We don't get as many anymore. But yes, usually they'd come through me and Gianni, and we and we look at them and look at references and look if it's something that we see fits with the community.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, thank you for everything you're doing. We appreciate it. Quick question is, what group that sometimes gets overlooked are teenagers, you know, in the sense that you you have some activities for the younger kids, the camps and the egg hunts, you have stuff for the older people. What what kind of outreach or activities are we looking to try to get the teenage high school age people kind of involved in the community?
Yeah, it's a question that that comes up a lot. Programming for that age is really difficult. They don't generally want to be supervised. What I found a lot of success with, though, and what I'm pursuing, and again, was derailed over COVID, but the more that we can do events and programs is, is a lot of these kids really love giving back, and they love volunteering for things. All the schools now require volunteer hours. And so when I put on something like an egg hunt, I fill up the volunteer slots for that. It's it's crazy. There's there's especially the Friday night one. I get my 20 kids right away. So so I think that that's really something that I kind of want to focus on, and volunteerism and giving back to the community, because we do get a lot of requests, we get a lot of requests from parents for, you know, how can we, you know, can we clean up the park? Can we do stuff like that? So organizing events is something that are organizing, giving back type programs is what I'd like to to focus on with with respect to the tweens.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
How about EV bike races?
No comment.
I wanted to jump on the pickleball comment to let you know something, Nick's, we tease Nick a lot about, because he has to deal with the complaints about people who don't have access to the resources that he's assigned a program. The number one thing all of you can do if you're advocates of pickleball is talk to the councils in the other cities and start to insist they build pickleball courts. The number one problem in Larkspur is that we operate a regional park. And I think the demand for pickleball is overwhelming our park, and it's not a lot of our residents. It's a lot of residents from other communities who have not invested in building a pickleball court, and quite frankly, may not want to deal with the headache of pickleballers fighting with tennis players. And I laugh and I joke about that, but we could tell you some stories that would shock you about the behavior of people in our age cohort and how they treat one another over this issue. But that is the number one thing you could do, is tell every neighboring city, you need to start fulfilling the demand, too.
Can I ask, is there some way we can prioritize Larkspur residents, you know, so that, I don't know, that they can reserve times or something like a special event for Larkspur residents, like Sunday mornings is Larkspur resident morning, you come down and, you know, something like that?
So there's some challenges for us, because Piper Park was owned by the county. It was the dump. It was the county dump. And when it was deeded to the over to the city, the county provided the money to convert it into a park. This way before my time. But this how it's been all explained to me. But But in doing so, there was a requirement that we operate as a regional facility. So we have limitations in our primary facility that Nick's in charge of programming in terms of trying to target our own residents because we accepted that dedication with the idea would be a regional operation. The other thing is, we've had similar questions about, well, could we do what some communities do and lock the tennis court at Centennial Park? And only give the keys out to Larkspur residents. Some communities do that. There's some challenges there because that's not our park. We, we basically leased that from the school district. They own that park. The ground underneath, just like they own the ground underneath the baseball fields and under Marin Primary. So again, it's a little convoluted for us just by the nature of the way these things have been set up.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
All right, I actually had to double check, and it's, it's just by, I think, a month. Damon, you're up next.
All right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. My name's Damon Hill, and I'm the Larkspur Library Director, and I wanted to, I think I've been here eight months. And it's been a great time and a great learning opportunity. Before I go into the accomplishments of what we've done, I think I just need to acknowledge our staff at the library who've done so much. They've pulled it all together, and without them, it wouldn't really be possible. And also the city staff who've been very supportive of this through the whole process. So I want to thank them and also our support groups. The friends, the foundation, the Commons. And what I wanted to do is start off with two things I worked with the library board on, and the first one was our communication plan. So we sat down and tried to figure out, as the library reopens, how do we make people know we're here? What, what are we doing? What services do we offer? So we're gonna, we, we're gonna launch probably a new newsletter to all our patrons in May. Hopefully, we've got a good template here. We revised our website a little bit. We really want to get out in the community a little bit more. So we've done events at Neil Cummins School, and we brought Larky with us, and we'll be like at the Bon Air Spring Fair, May eighteenth, again with Larky. So we're looking for all these opportunities to get out in the community, meet with people, and this plan's kind of helped us do that. The other thing, the plan we worked with the board on is to revise our mission statement a little bit. And what we're, we're going to focus in on, we had a lot of good discussions. So we decided kind of three key principles. One is literacy, and we want to make sure in the library that we're working with people, especially younger people, the importance of reading and its power in their lives, especially with youth, but also our older adults. And I think that also always be the core brand of library would be reading. But we also wanted to expand into knowledge, and we always want to be an institution that values learning, and it's kind of seen as a place where people can come, and we foster that love of learning. And then lastly, we want to foster community. So that's going to be programs, people coming to attend events, people just seeing each other in the library. So the library board has been great, and they've helped us build that. I kind of wanted to also highlight here a couple grants we got from the state. MarinNet is our consortium of all the libraries within Marin County, and so you can borrow books from it. So there's county libraries and six city libraries. We worked and got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant for network upgrade. We have a network that's separate from the city's network, and it's going to, it's really fast. And so that grant's going to pay for all new equipment in the backbone, which is in San Rafael, but also provide us all new equipment for the new library. So it's going to be lightning fast, top-line Wi-Fi. So we're excited. We also got the Zipbook Program, which has been a real fun program. So if we can't get a book for you, we'll buy it for you, and we'll mail it to your house, and then we add it to the collection. So the community gets to kind of select the books we're getting. So we've, that's been a fun program. I thought I'd just talk a little bit about circulation too, a little bit. Coming out of COVID, it's kind of been a little slower, but we circulated about seventy-five thousand books last year, but I also wanted to highlight thirty-six thousand ebooks from just Larkspur patrons. And so what we're starting to see even trending this year, forty percent ebook, sixty percent physical collection. And so that has a lot of implications, especially as that line trends. And then the other thing I kind of wanted to highlight was, we're moving towards a lot more children's circulation. So like in nineteen and twenty, it was about twenty-five percent of our circulation was children's. Now we're at about fifty percent and growing for children. So if you've ever been in that room, it's super small, I think it could grow a lot more. So that's an area as we build the new library, we want to make sure we're getting those books into hands of people. And we've heard from a lot of parents, they like the books, and screens aren't always the best thing for youngest children. So we want to be there for those people and providing as many books as possible, and we're just responding to what they want.
Damon, I had a quick question for you. Sorry. Could you do this one with ebooks? If like ten people want to read the same ebook, can they read it at the same time? I mean, how, how does that work? Because can everyone have access to it, or is it a copyright issue?
We, it's a little complicated, but we have this basically this platform through MarinNet called Libby, and you put a hold on it just like other books. So we buy a certain amount of copies. Some are metered, some are, we have permanently. Some are always available. We have also like a skip-the-line kind of thing, so you can just pop in, but there is a hold list. We also have a program called Hoopla, and that's instant access, where you can stream the book, stream the audiobook. So it kind of depends where you're going with it. We also, I guess, what else we got there? Also wanted to highlight, we have a lot of non-book services we started to implement. So we have passes from the Water District people can check out. We have State Park passes. We started a seed library, which again is kind of this community idea where people have brought in seeds, and then people are taking seeds. We've kind of partnered with master gardeners to learn about gardening. So it's kind of bringing, we're kind of just bringing people together, and it's only no cost. We also kind of did this. We have a lot of success with puzzles and games checked out that we had donated. People have loved that. Interesting to hear those kind of comments. This puzzle was too hard. It shouldn't be at the library. Some of those kinds of things. And the other thing we kind of did was we distributed a thousand COVID tests. And so what we're doing, I think, is the library can be a powerful distribution center for a lot of things beyond books is kind of what I wanted to highlight there. And we've also increased a lot of in-person programming after COVID finally. So we've returned Storytime weekly, which has been just, it's, it's a fun thing if you ever come back to Fridays. And we're trying to do a lot of programs again for our older adults. So we've had a couple successful chair yoga programs. Tomorrow, we're going to try a sound bath. And so I could probably go on a little too much at all our programs, but we've had, you know, residents speak to what their experiences are. Our friends bought us a new AV system. And so again, small space, but we're trying to get out there with our, with our programs, and we continue to do our program with the Tamil Pious, where we're doing a book club there, and we're doing a TED Talk. And so we recently did a TED Talk with them and introduced AI. And so that was, you know, good, interesting discussion for that group of people. Also, I didn't get it on this slide, but I wanted to highlight that we've had thirty volunteers provide over seven hundred hours of work service for us. Lot of teens who help around with the book and those type of things. But we also, like on Saturday this month, we have a ninth grader who's helping middle school students tutor in math. And he just loves math and wants to be there to help. So again, it's great to have all that volunteer support among the community. And so those were our accomplishments. And then, sorry, just took that one. Okay, and then our goals here, again, kind of wanted to enhance public communication, and we just want to get out there and let people know we're here. What are we doing? And we also, as a communication, want to hear from people. So what kind of services are you looking for? What are you interested in? Where we want to do a detailed review of our existing physical collection, so see what's circling, what's not, what should we be purchasing? What's going to go over to the new library, what's not? We started that already. We want to survey patrons for interest on program services and collections. So as we have the newsletter, I think we'll be able to send something out, get a little input, figure out if we're meeting people's needs, maybe look for some new ideas that people have, especially maybe some people who haven't visited the library in a while. What, what can we provide you, and what do you want? And then we want to kind of like Nick mentioned earlier, conduct a strategic analysis of our operations as we move forward and figure out what types of programs and services people could offer. And then we want to, we're so fortunate here. I've been in libraries many years, have a great support groups. So our friends of the library have been great. They recently have gotten new families involved, new younger members who want to, will advise us a little bit on what that constituency wants. Our library foundation, obviously, the Commons Foundation. So we want to work together, figure out how we can serve people together, what each group will do. And so I think that kind of concludes everything, and just I want to thank you for all your support. And if you had any questions about the library, I can take them out.
Yeah, on the end. Any questions?
Well, Damon, great job. The program at the library, I really noticed is you've increased a lot of the programming, which is great. And I've also noticed that on social media, which is how I found out about some of these events that have been going on, I also think that's a great avenue as well, although I feel like, you know, given the demographics of Larkspur, not very many, we don't have a whole lot of residents that are on social media, but there is a demographic here where, you know, I think it's great that you're putting stuff out on Instagram and, you know, letting people know that this is, you know, this is what the library is offering. I attended like a embroidery class at the library a month ago, and it was great. And what I've realized is there are people who attend these events at different libraries. They'd be telling me like, oh, last week I was at the Mill Valley Library doing this, and you know, the week before that I was at the Tiburon Library. So I think the community, the broader community, really appreciates these programs and events that are, that are being put on by the library. And it allows the opportunity also just for residents to get to know other residents, which I, which I think is great. And then just a quick note too, you can also check out Ukulele's. Yes, so anyways, well done. I, you know, to the extent that, you know, the new library, when it opens, as you're thinking about, you know, what sort of programs can transition, transition over to the new library, I think it'd be great to get some public input from that because I think the public probably has a lot of great ideas for you, and when you have expanded space for, for some of the events and programs that you might want to do. Thanks.
Tried to put a book on hold the other day. There were three hundred and eighty-five people ahead of me. Bummer, had to go buy it. But I noticed a lot more large print books. Was that something that came about from feedback from community?
Oh, yeah, a large type, yeah, we've heard that from the community, and it's been as part of the demographic. It started a little bit before I arrived, and the Library Foundation helped fund a lot of those books. And I think one of the nice things here for the space is the large type is accessible for people, so they don't have to walk far, and they can go right there. So we're going to continue to grow that as long as people request it and are using it.
You know, the other thing, I remember a couple of years back, the previous library director, I don't remember which one now, really saw the expansion in children's utilization and ended up creating more opportunities to buy bilingual books, more books in Spanish. Are you finding that as something we can expand, or is there a need for it?
I, I think that's kind of one of those community surveys and something, you know, we want to look at. We've also had a few requests recently for Mandarin for children. So we kind of want to explore that a little bit more, you know, if it's just one person getting excited. But yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunities, especially in the publishing world with Spanish. There's a lot of bilingual books, and then bilingual storytimes.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thanks.
Damon, thank you so much. Just a couple questions. I love the fact that you started with the goals, you know, one is, is literacy, another one is community. Can you say a little bit about computer literacy? And, you know, any, any initiatives there? And then one program I think I saw was, you know, this ability to get magazines and journals, like if you want to get Time and Newsweek and The Economist and all that, there's a way, you know, rather than paying hundreds and hundreds of dollars of subscription to do it through the library, and I'm wondering if you could say a little more about that?
Oh, sure. I think with our current setup, we don't have too much technology demand, and it's hard to do technology classes, to be very honest. And, but I think when we move to the new library, there's a lot of opportunities for that, and I think, think it's what is that computer literacy? So like at the TAM, we started talking about AI. And so I think there might be some things there. We're a little small, don't have the lab, but we did do in this last summer a girls' coding program. So I think there's opportunities, and within the magazines within our app, Libby, the mag, there are magazines in there, and that's part of your checkout. So you can check out The Economist, download it from MarinNet, and that's an instant use.
Might have to jump in for a second, Damon. Just a reminder, when we did all the research that went into planning the new library, we heard over and over again from directors all throughout the facilities we visited to move away from the computer lab model and move to the bring-your-own-device model. And my understanding, Damon, you could correct me if you're wrong, but the, the training and literacy that you're talking about is, is now being shifted to today, we'll be teaching people who own this type of device how to maximize that type of device. Because that's just where the, most of the demand is, and from a cost standpoint, putting all that emphasis into making sure that our facility has the power and the Wi-Fi and the connectivity so that everybody, no matter what device they bring, is enjoying the facility is, is where we're going to get our biggest bang for our bucks.
And I just said, we have been, a few people bring in their devices, especially older adults, and say, how do we do this? And so we've sat down with them for like fifteen minutes and say, this is how you check out ebook.
So, and I'm sorry, the new library, and I, I know we're not down to the details, but is, is the vision to have like a long table with outlets at every seat, so everybody can plug their laptops in, like a computer section?
Actually, that model's gone too. That was popular about fifteen years ago. What you do, the way you do it now is you, you buy furniture, it's all powered in the furniture. You buy a table that might be just a small square table, but there's multiple outlets in that table. You have chairs that have connectivity. It's, it's, there's now lots of firms that will provide that type of furniture to you. So it's not that long. We're all just plugging in. It's everywhere I sit, I should be able to get power, and I should be able to get connectivity.
All right.
Okay.
Other questions? Damon, thank you so much. Everything is going, going smoothly, so we appreciate it.
All right, so our, our fifth and final department is our administration, and there's two sort of branches. So administrations divide up into the finance service, financial services area, and then the city manager's office and the city clerk's office. And my partner in running the department is the Administrative Services Director, Amelia Gabrielle. So she's going to present on financial services, and then I'll have some brief comments about the city manager, city clerk area.
Thank you, Dan, for the introduction. I'm going to start with an overview of our core financial services functions, and then go into our accomplishments and goals. Hey, I wanted to start by introducing to you or team our values and our customers. I am the Administrative Services Director for the city, and I also work in the capacity of the Chief Financial Officer for the city and the treasurer. I'm very fortunate to have two staff members that are extremely dedicated professionals. I have someone who's a financial analyst, and she handles the payroll function of the organization for the city and the Central Marin Police Authority. I also have, working with me, an accounting specialist whose primary role is to manage I also have working with me an accounting specialist whose primary role is to manage the accounts payable for all the agencies that we support. Our core service is to administer the financials of the city. We also provide services to the Central Marin Police Authority, the Ross Valley Paramedics Authority and the Larkspur Marina Financing Authority. In doing so, we collaborate with people, with the leadership of these organizations that we support to accomplish our goals and to also meet our deliverables. We have as a team, a service orientation mindset. Our work is transactional for the most part and we're driven by deadlines. It is critical that we are very accurate in our transaction processing and our financial reporting. We value professional development in our team. We want to stay up to date with the latest development in accounting, pension and and also payroll. And we take refresher courses on a regular basis. We consistently look for ways to improve ourselves, our skill sets and the systems that we work with in finance. Okay, so this slide here provides you with a snapshot of the financial services organization that we, that I manage. Starting with our day-to-day operation. So our first and foremost, most important function is to account for the collection and disbursement of all the monies for the city and the external agencies that we're providing services to. Collectively, this is, this represents approximately fifty-two million dollars in a given year. Our team is issuing on average five thousand payments to vendors annually. And our payroll analyst is processing bi-weekly payroll for over eighty employees. And as such, he's also administering benefits and pension for those employees. We also administer the health benefits for the retired employees of the city and the Central Marin Police Authority. I work on the budget with the leadership of the organizations that we support. I prepare the annual budget and I also work on budget amendments. So I administer the budget for the organizations that I work with. And I do a lot of forecasting of our revenue and I keep the leadership appraised of the financial conditions of their programs. As the city treasurer, I manage the cash flow of the organization. I administer the investment portfolio and I ensure that all of our financial obligations are met. We do a lot of financial reporting, starting with the annual audit and the single audit. We also have a lot of financial reporting requirements with external agencies, the state comptroller's office, with our funders at the federal, state and county level. We also have debt reports that we have to report to regulatory agencies. And of course, we have filing with the Internal Revenue Service, the franchise tax boards and various agencies. So next slide, we'll talk about the accomplishments for this fiscal year. So first and foremost, I believe we had a successful finance leadership transition. So I came on board in August of twenty twenty-three and I transitioned with the former administrative services director for a number of months. And so I believe the transition was very successful. We worked on the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit. So this was completed within the established timeframe that we had targeted. Also during the first few months, I've done an assessment of the systems that we are currently in place and look for opportunities to improve the accuracy of our data and the efficiency of our reporting system. I had the opportunity to implement a new work management tool system to assist me with the planning of our major deliverables in finance. I have also designed and implemented several new templates to improve the accuracy and effectiveness of the budget and the reporting system. I also want to mention that we are in the final phase of a cross-agency initiative to implement NeoGoth, which is a new hiring process, electronic forms. And our finance team has also implemented the digitization or we digitized the accounts payable documentation. We started that, I think, I believe a year ago and we've fully implemented that. For the first time this year, we filed with the Internal Revenue Service, the electronic ten, ten ninety-nine and W two reports with them. The last thing I want to mention on this slide is collectively, our team has attended about eighty hours of refresher courses in technical areas such as internal control, accounting and pension. So what we have in the work in term of our goals and in the short term and midterm. So starting with what we're currently doing is we're working on the annual budget for all the organizations that we support. So our budget season is in full swing and we are on target to meet our timeline and deliverable for the budget. We are currently working with our actuarial consultant to have a valuation of our city and CNPA pension and OPEB, other public employee benefits. So this is on target to be completed by the time that the audit will be done for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. We currently are working, we just started the work with our external auditors for the interim audit of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Another thing I want to mention is we're in the process of implementing the remote deposit technology with the Bank of Marin. So this is going to improve our efficiency when we do our deposit. And we are in the process of restructuring the finance electronic filing system. So we're working on that currently. So this is, probably will be completed by the end of the calendar year. Our midterm goals on the, on the horizon, what we have is I'd like to create a work plan to implement the fixed assets module in our Tyler accounting system. And another thing is I would like to refine the written procedures we have in finance for finance processes. So we do have procedures in place, but I feel they need to be refined and we'll be working as a team to do that in the upcoming year. Another thing I'd like to explore is I'd like to explore ways to better use scanning technology to reduce the use of papers and look for a solution to implement a document management system for the finance department. And ideally, this document management system, technology would integrate with the use of electronic finance form, a database and possibly an electronic workflow. So that's on the horizon as far as the objective and goal for the next fiscal year. That concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Let's see if we have any questions. Let's start, Gabe, you got any questions?
Shocked me. Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I'm, you know, curious, you know, without getting too far in the weeds, there are so many digital initiatives you have. And, and just as at a high level, you know, what's your sense of, you know, how much more efficiency this might bring about? So if you go more paperless, if you have more, you know, of an online system and, you know, the Bank of Marin, I'm assuming it's like you take the picture of the check and it's deposited rather than running over to Corte Madera. You know, what, what, what is your sense of time savings or FTE savings?
I, I think that by doing this, we'll be able to add value to the service we're providing to the department heads, to the city manager and to the other agencies that we're supporting. So I'm not sure we're going to be able to reduce the number of FTEs. But definitely we will enhance the services we're providing and we'll have, I think, more of a, you know, again, accurate reporting and so on and so forth. And I see that Dan might want to chime in here.
I, I just thought I'd chime in for two things because I'm gonna take a cue from council member Andrea. So let's celebrate that we're getting rid of paper. Because, you know, we get new people and they come in and they see good processes and they immediately say, but I can make that better. And one of the first things Amelia said is we're consuming way too much paper in this department. And so she's on a mission to add that value. To answer your question, I think the efficiency is actually that Amelia's highlighting. And I'm glad she mentioned the departments because I think what she's going to do to take us to the next level is improve the real-time access to financial information for departments. That's kind of been a missing piece of our system, is that ready access for, for all these other individuals. And I think that's where we're headed next. And so we may not capture huge efficiencies in, in her unit versus efficiencies across the organization.
Okay. And maybe just one follow-up question. Is there a model, like, you know, let's just stick within Marin, you know, San Rafael, Nevada? Is there, is there a, you know, agency that you look at where you say, they really have automated well? They really have provided real-time financial intelligence? Is, is there, you know, a template you're looking at just out of curiosity?
And my prior experience have worked with improving systems and digitizing papers. So now it, you know, in, in these organizations, they're no longer using as much paper as they used to. In government, I mean, unfortunately, you know, there's a tendency to be heavy paper, paper. But I think we can look at models. I may not be able to speak to, you know, what other agencies are doing here in Marin. I mean, I come from Sonoma County and Contra Costa County. But we have seen things done differently that I think we can learn from, you know, those best practices that I've experienced in the past.
And just one request, you know, we got this really wonderful paper budget book. Don't care about that. I know it can be a PDF, but anyways, thank you.
Amelia, just a quick question. If you were going to rate from one to ten, if you're going to say how technologically modern we are at this point, where would you rate us from one to ten? And, and where would we be in a year? And how long is it going to take us to get to a ten?
We're probably at a four. And it's going to take probably more than a year to take us to a ten. And the reason why is we have a very small team. So we have to balance what, you know, we need to do on a day-to-day basis to meet all, you know, the expectations and the regulatory requirements related to finance. So, you know, we, we have to be able to weave in those initiatives with the day-to-day operations that we're running. So I'm not sure we're going to be at a ten in one year, but we definitely will strive to improve our processes to be more efficient.
Okay. Is there anything we as a council can do to support you in that process? Because I think we all see the importance of that.
I'm gonna maybe turn it over to Dan on this, since he has more experience with the city here.
So I first have to, to say, particularly having gone through all the improvements to get where we are. We were the, I think we're still the only city in Marin that can run the entire financial operation of the city from any internet connection in the world. You know, we have, and we have almost zero vulnerability that that system will crash because it's in multiple server farms around the country. So I think that was a big leap for us. And then now what I think Amelia's going to need from me and from the council is resources. And it's going to be challenging in the budget environment that we're potentially looking at to, to allocate those resources. But technology's not cheap and investment in technology is not cheap. But luckily, one thing that happens when you bring in new folks too, is they look at resources you have and they say, I've seen this done a better way somewhere else with what you already have. So right now we're in that phase. I should also say, and I pointed Damon too. We got Damon and Amelia from counties. But, you know, I came from county once upon a time. One nice thing and challenging thing for both of them, I think, is when you're in a county, you're at a big scale, right? You have to figure out how to take these visions that you have and scale them to Larkspur, which that takes time too.
Okay. Catherine, nothing? Stephanie?
Well, Amelia, congratulations. And it's amazing what you've been able to accomplish since August.
Thank you very much.
Yes. So I just have a few, a couple of quick questions for you. One is with respect to controls. How do you feel that the controls that the city has in place, are you, are you comfortable with what's in place? In terms of, for instance, if someone that fingered, you know, oh, this, this payment is five thousand dollars, but they put in fifty million. Are you comfortable with the way the processes are set up? That you would get an alert or notification right away that something has, has gone wrong?
We, we, we have controls in place. We, we, I think we provide good, accurate information. And this has been proven with the financial audits that we've had in the past few years with very little to no findings. Our team is fairly small, so this is always a challenge, right? In term of having the right internal control. So we have to have compensate, we have to compensate for internal, internal control in some instances because of the size of our team. And in relation to the budget, right, that we have for the three agencies in total. And we do a lot of transactions. So, Dan, I don't know if you want to add to this.
I think when you've gone through one of our audits, you're going to hear that we always are, we always have one material problem, which is because of our size, the auditors don't like that essentially administrative services director is what's called a super user within the backend of the system. Meaning that we, we've had to create our own internal checks and balances that involve the other two members of Amelia's staff plus myself to put some guardrails on that. But we can never fully comply unless we were to bring in a full-time controller type position. And that just
Right.
doesn't return enough to the city. So we've had to learn to live with that check. But to your specific example, those types of mistakes can't really happen unless multiple people make mistakes.
Okay. That's good to know. And do you feel that the implementation of some of this technology that you're trying to implement might mitigate or sort of help prevent some of those errors? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And at least, or at least raise your attention quicker, that something in this, has, something is wrong in the system?
Absolutely. And we've put in place in the past few months, additional internal controls to, you know, ensure we, you know, we beef up our controls. And by way of having additional templates, when we do our reporting, there's more accuracy and consistency.
Great.
By using different functions in Excel as an example, that would allow, you know, allows us to be more accurate.
And how quickly do you think, if you needed a real-time snapshot of where the city is versus the budget? Do you feel that, how much time do you think it would take for you to get that information?
And it doesn't take very long. We have a good accounting system. Tyler is a recognized system in the, in the United States. It's used by other government agencies. We have a good structure in our chart of accounts. And so we track funds and we track projects, you know, separately, we segregate. So it's easy to run reports and then to figure out what the financial condition is for a specific grant or fund or project. So
Okay, great.
We're in a good place.
All right. So if there were a large variance for some reason, you could, you could see that fairly quickly.
Yes, every morning when I come in, I, first thing I look at is bank account. I have a tracker that I actually implemented for all the monies coming in. It's being tracked on a daily basis now.
Great.
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to compliment, both Amelia and her predecessor. We, Amelia's predecessor and I worked to convert the city almost entirely a cash-based model. And so, and Amelia's embraced that. And a key part of that is reconciling every day, which is very time-consuming, but is that other key check. You, every day you're, you're making sure that the books actually match up.
Wonderful. And then last question with respect to the investments. I saw your last investment report. It was very helpful. Do we use anyone as an outside consultant in terms of which instruments or securities that we invest in? Or is it just, is that done by council or how, how does that work?
So it's a multi-layered question.
Okay.
The state passes guidelines and limitations on where, what government can invest in. So a lot of times folks will look at our portfolio and say it's too conservative. And the first thing is you have to understand what, what an investor at home might be able to do or in a company, we can't necessarily do to limit our risk exposure. So that's layer one. Layer two is we hire someone who's familiar with the California laws and then makes recommendations on what the council's policy ought to be within that spectrum of what the state allows. Um, and you look at that every year during the budget process. So in the June meeting, that'll be one of the policies that you, uh, re-adopt or talk about wanting to change. Um, and then lastly, that same consultant advises Amelia and on what investments ought to be done. And she's courtesy enough, courteous enough to ask my opinion, but actually in the code, she's in charge of investments. So, um, she could make that final decision.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, just, just one final question that I have for either of you, which is, um, do you have a wish list of, you know, is something that you don't have? I mean, you were saying technology is expensive. Do you have like one or two things that you feel would make us a lot more efficient? But we just haven't budgeted it, put it as out in the budget or just something that you think is a missing piece?
I mean, for us, I, I talked about this, a document management system that is suitable for finance. So I think that's pretty critical and, you know, again, eliminating paper as much as possible and having that stored electronically in an organized fashion and a document management system would definitely help.
Do you have a particular system in mind?
I know the city uses Laserfish. So we, I'm in an exploration phase with the city clerk. We had a meeting today to discuss Laserfish as an option. But there's more exploration to do to make sure that it meets the financial needs of the department.
Okay.
I think what's the hardest thing for the entire admin unit is the, everything's people driven and time based. And so I think the resource we're gonna need to make these ambitions happen is probably some outside support because these are really one time projects. We can manage them with the resources and people we have once they're in place. But it becomes kind of daunting and can lead to action paralysis for our whole unit. When you sort of sit there and go, I've got 20 other things to do, but I'd really like to get this done. And so I think if we bring you a request where we, we've identified someone who has expertise that maybe comes in for a month and helps us make something happen, that's, that's when we'll want that support.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that presentation, appreciate it.
So we'll build on that and finish up here. Sky's gotta hand me the, the clicker, although I think I only have two slides. I always know that when I go last, I gotta keep it short. You still have another item, a big one. I told you this was gonna be a real meeting today. You know, preface this that, uh, our, our, our unit on the city manager and city clerk side is four people. And if we're doing our jobs right, then the people just spoke and the people at work under them have shined. You know, my goal is that you don't see what we did to make what happened, happen. And so a lot of what you heard tonight, uh, our team is in the background providing the resources and the policy guidance and the liaison work to the council and the community to make sure that everything happens. And that's our job one. But there are sometimes, I think, things I wanna highlight, uh, that we're working on very specifically. And so to talk about some of our accomplishments, um, you know, the city website had gotten pretty stale. I think probably we'd still like it to be even better, but, um, it's a lot better than it was 12 months ago. And that really was our internal team that did that, um, with input from the other departments. You know, I, again, I don't want, I, I usually try to let the department shine, but, uh, admin's done a lot to help make the comments project come alive. So I really value that partnership with all the other departments. And I think I probably spent more time with Julian this year on that and the roads than I have with anybody else on the staff. The other thing I wanna thank the council for is it's sometimes a leap of faith to give me expanded staff capacity. And, uh, you were kind enough to support me when I suggested that we, uh, take the assistant to the city manager position and make an assistant city manager position. And I think the path for that is that the community services departments, the library and rec are getting far more attention now from the admin unit than they've ever gotten. And I think the explosions we're starting to see in those departments is because they're getting what they need that they couldn't get when the demands on my time were too much. But in addition, that restructure has made us a stronger player in the region because we've been able to improve our, our representation. And some of these goals that we've talked about, uh, whether it's, uh, dealing with our collaborative that does climate issues, whether it's dealing with our collaborative, uh, that's working on compliance with Cal Recycles goals, whether it's dealing with the other cities on just partnerships, we're at the table much stronger and more regularly than we've been in the past. I am gonna say we, the admin unit has spent a heck of a lot of time on rent stabilization and eviction protections for the last 12 months. So, uh, that did suck up a lot of our time and resources. And then, uh, you know, any election is challenging for our unit to make sure it goes off correctly, especially at our scale and size. But a special election that included a special council seat, uh, election and a referendum was a, a learning experience that I didn't necessarily need to have, but now I've done it with the staff. And I wanna thank, um, Shannon and Allison for their support during that period. And then we've set some goals that, uh, tonight you approved the first step so that we can begin to transition our HR model in light of the fact that our current model, the core person is retiring. We're gonna try to build a little bit, uh, stronger internal, uh, unit of HR so we can give more support in that area to the staff. We've been using, uh, a little broader model where we were sharing with a number of agencies. Uh, we'll now be bringing that into our admin unit and supporting Larkspur and the central man police, which is a primary admin function that we do. Our departments are doing a great job of thinking about what we ought to push out in communication, but that work is done internally and centralized in the, in our unit. And this year, one of our goals is to actually improve the quality of the images of our community that we're sharing. Right now, we rely heavily on somebody doing a quick snapshot with a phone or some picture that, uh, looks a little dated. So, uh, we're gonna commission a professional photographer, get some stock photos of the city and then keep that photographer on, um, some sort of retainer. So we can commission them when there's events that really warrant getting those photos that we can really celebrate the things that we've been doing for our community. I think that's the next evolution of our, our outreach. And then, um, probably the thing I, I'll preempt council member Paulson because he likes to ask, uh, what keeps you up at night? I'm watching our revenue streams flatten, so it's keeping me up a bit at night. Uh, and I'm starting to work with Amelia to model out what that means for the city because that's the big discussion that we're gonna have. And then now we're transitioning from having, uh, done the rent, rent stabilization, eviction protections debate into what it looks like to manage and oversee that. Your questions were apropos to Lisa about it being community development. A lot of cities house the programs there. I just felt when we looked at our spread of staff, that didn't work for us. We're, we're so busy in community development with, with general plan housing element. Uh, you heard how our code enforcement on the building side has just exploded that, uh, we felt that was a burden we could, uh, manage. Sorry, that was a staffing, uh, exercise we could manage in the administration. Uh, and then lastly, an initiative that the council talked about in its strategic planning session, and it's one that the staffs wanted to invest in. And this will be one that Assistant City Manager Shannon Harrell will be taking the lead on is, uh, we're going to take the next step in doing disaster preparedness and resiliency programs. You know, we've relied on a sort of, uh, decentralized approach. And I think now we're gonna really bring that under admin and start to push some of these programs. We're gonna put that measure G money to work. Uh, that was something the community entrusted us to do, uh, and, and see some of these programs take off. So, uh, you're actually gonna hear from the Office of Emergency Management's Director. Is it the next meeting, Shannon? Next meeting, um, we're gonna, uh, sort of reinvest in our partnership with that county organization uh, so that we have the right types of planning documents so that what we do in Larkspur has a proper nexus to what's being done countywide to respond to emergencies. And then we're also, as the council knows, looking now at how we can invest in our infrastructure so that it's prepared to serve as centers during any, uh, disaster or recovery period. That's kind of where that resiliency component comes. And it's, you know, we often have a tendency to talk about disaster and focus on wildfire and earthquakes. But our mind actually, as staff, a lot goes to warming centers, cooling centers, clean air, uh, centers. Cause that's what we get asked a lot about and we have not been able to offer those, um, to the community in the past. So there's some core things that, uh, we're working on. And, uh, the other thing is every department, uh, has responsibilities to make sure that, uh, we're complying with, uh, requirements from the federal government, the state government, the county government. And a lot of, a lot of that final checking balances us. And so we spend a lot of time working on that area as well. And that's it, I try to keep it pretty quick. But, uh, we, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Questions for our city manager? Seeing none, Gabe? All right. All right, we're good. Let's, uh, close, uh, business item eight point two. And let's go on to eight point three.
I'm gonna, if you don't mind, if some of the department has
Absolutely. Have a nice night.
You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to go, folks, you've been here a while, but council, you gotta stay.
All right, yeah, so let's go to eight points. Let's go eight point three options for filling the vacancy on city council. Can we get a staff report?
I'll do the quick intro and then you'll, you can pester the city attorney with questions. Sorry, uh, as you know, we had, we've lost council member Carol, that's created a vacancy. It certainly would be great if we could have more time to pause about that. But unfortunately, on the day of Councilmember Carol's passing, a clock started uh, for you to make a decision on what happens with that seat. So it's just not practical to wait a while to make that decision. So, uh, this evening you find yourself having a discussion that, uh, is a bit of a, a repeat of a discussion that occurred, uh, in the fall, which is the fact that you have a vacancy on the council and you have different options in terms of appointment and election, uh, in terms of filling that seat. And as part of that challenge is this ambiguity about the status of, uh, Mayor Candle and, uh, Kendall and, uh, Councilman Paulson, uh, because we didn't have, actually have an election the year he ran because no one else had run. And the law is kind of silent on what that means in terms of whether you were elected or appointed. And so you have all the material to consider the pros and cons and concerns that go along with that particular issue, uh, which relates to the fact that if you're appointed, there should only be a minority of the council that's appointed, there should not be a majority. So, um, that was my very quick Reader's Digest, it's getting late, presentation, but, uh, the city attorney can add any key points that, uh, need to be added in terms of process. And between you and the city clerk, who's your elections officer, we can, uh, hopefully answer questions you may have about what will happen next.
All right, so let me, let me start if I could by, uh, asking a question, uh, maybe frame the issues. My understanding is we basically have three choices. One is to appoint someone, which I think is probably, we discussed it the last, uh, time this came up and probably not ideal considering, uh, two of the four of us, uh, did not have a contested election. Uh, the second would be to have a special election, which I think also is not ideal but to, due to the cost that it would be to the city. And the third would be to, uh, stay with the four of us until November and have the election in November. Am I getting those three options correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so having said that, um, as we've already had this conversation. I know, I know, but, but, but we, we've kind of, uh, kind of badgered this around a little bit. And I think, you know, what we had decided last time was that it wasn't worth the risk of appointing somebody because there's a chance that somebody could contest the fact that, that Gabe and I didn't go through a contested election and could be seen as appointed and it could have a problem for the council moving forward. I think we had decided we're considering a special election and thought that the cost wouldn't be worth it because it would basically save us a couple of months. You know, we'd have somebody in, I don't know, August or some, September, something like that instead of November. Wasn't really worth the cost, uh, so we elected just to have an election at the next scheduled election. That's probably where I'm leaning. I'm as always open to being convinced, uh, something else. And I will open the floor to anybody who has an opinion on this.
That was a great summary. Can I, um, ask Sky? Um, I looked in the staff report that we don't have a policy on interim appointments. So can you, um, kind of elaborate on if an interim appointment is thought through, what's our steps for getting a appropriate policy on that?
If, uh, the council gave direction tonight that you were interested in, um, having the option to make an interim appointment, uh, we could, uh, come back at your next regular meeting or depending on schedule, schedule a special meeting. Um, and we could prepare a fairly simple ordinance, uh, that would add to the municipal code, the option for the council to, uh, do the appointment, uh, on an interim basis. Uh, we would do that as both in, my, my recommendation would be that we, uh, bring that to you as both an urgency ordinance, ordinance and a regular ordinance. The regular ordinance just being a backup, um, in case anybody wanted to challenge the urgency basis for it. But, uh, council would, uh, unlike a standard ordinance that requires first reading, second reading, 30 days and urgency ordinance, you can adopt immediately and would go into effect immediately. Um, and you would then be able to, uh, begin the process of doing an interim appointment. I won't elaborate unless you have questions on the, on sort of the, the sort of typical process and options that you have for doing an appointment. It would be the same for an interim, but those would be the basic steps. You, you have to adopt an ordinance, um, to effectuate that option. It's just a requirement of, of state law that it be done by ordinance.
Would an interim, um, appointment then run the same complicated risk of having two and two, two council members who were essentially appointed and two who were elected? Would we still run into that same difficulty of, um, having a majority who were appointed?
I think so because the state law that applies, uh, is very simple. It just says a majority of the council can't be appointed. It doesn't differentiate between interim or permanent. And as we've discussed at length previously and is outlined in the staff report, it doesn't even differentiate between appointed and, um, uh, placed into office in lieu of an election, uh, when somebody had already qualified for the election. So I think that the risk would be there even with an interim appointment.
That answers those couple of questions I've gotten recently.
Questions that you have? Or Gabe, any, any thoughts you guys wanna share?
Yeah, um, just a, a technical question about this, this occurred when council member R F left. Um, so the clock, um, you know, Kevin's, I guess the, the, the start of the clock was March 26th. Is it 30 days or what's the?
It is 60 days.
60 days.
Yeah, it used to be 30. I even sometimes have difficulty remembering that it's now 60. But thankfully, the legislature realized that 30 days was really too fast for city councils to take this action.
Okay, so in principle, we have until May 26th or thereabouts, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that, and that helps with the issue about the special election versus placing it on November. Because if you choose to do it by, um, by election, then we would wait until after May 5th. And then, um, we'd bring forward resolution at that point for you to call the election and it would go, it would automatically roll to the November election.
Okay, and then just a few more, these are kind of practical logistics questions. And the cost, I think, um, last time, you know, we were thinking, you know, the only other municipality was Ross, which had some, so, you know, you share the cost with other agencies per voter. But, but it seems like we'd be pretty much on our own given, given the November ballot. So what's the rough cost estimate? We have what, 8,000 voters times, I forget what the cost per voter is.
I, I can answer based on the staff report. And if you have, uh, have additional questions, then Allison can, can And if you have uh have additional questions, then Allison can can fill those in because she's the one who had the information. But actually, um, the November election, the 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 numbers from the county are actually much lower because even though um it's not, the the county anticipates that there will be enough other elections occurring because November is a is a standard election with a presidential and all of that, that the the cost will actually be much lower because they get spread over every every other election across the county.
I'm sorry, that's if we were to place it on the November ballot.
Yes.
No, I was asking if we don't place it on the November ballot.
So yes, the so the only other option would be a an all-male ballot um in August. And that would be August 27th because it's the legislatures um picked the uh I think it's the fourth Tuesday in in August, something like that. And yes, that would be about uh not quite five times or more the cost.
Okay. And the other thing, sorry, just one, then and then there's the date. I mean, so if if we had this in August, there'd be a certification in September. And then we would basically have someone two months sooner. So we we have, no matter what path we take, short of appointment, we don't have anyone until September.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, that kind of makes it clear for me.
So just two more questions. If uh if we choose the special election option, um, would that preclude someone from then also pulling papers to run for a general election in November? Because we they wouldn't know if they had one or not. Does that make sense?
No, would not preclude them. They they would be able to seek nomination for both the special election and the the November election.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean for for one of the one of the other seats?
Yes.
Yeah, so they would roll.
Then we'd have the same problem.
Yes, so they would, yes, they would. They would then roll over from the two-year term to the four-year term. And then there'd be a vacancy created for the remainder of the two-year term.
So we'd be doing this again, the third time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And they, the, let's say, um, we wait until November. That spot would be just to complete Councilmember Carroll's term of two additional years.
That's correct.
Okay. We don't have to decide this tonight, do we?
Uh, well, no more questions. Any questions? Do we want to talk about it? I mean, I'm, all right. So so I I think I kind of made my.
You did.
Position clear. You know, if people want to think about it, I'm fine. If we want to talk about it, I'm fine. I mean, it seems like a like a pretty easy decision, but I'm, like I said, I'm happy if people feel differently to talk about it. If everyone agrees, then maybe we should just decide. And again, I'll back off and see if anyone has any thoughts.
Well, I would say the um the appointment carries a couple of risks in my mind. And correct me if I'm wrong, the not just the fact that we we would have a majority, which under state law, but also it's possible that if we made a decision that someone was unhappy with, that 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 decision could be contested as well, correct? Or someone can decide to.
But there's this principle in case law called, um, I I always forget what it is. I have to remind myself.
Sorry, decisive.
It's a, it's 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 something like de facto office holder.
That's not it.
That's not it. I I really got to remember what it is. Exactly. Anything in Latin. The the point being that the that the presumption is that um somebody who is holding office is holding office legitimately. So until they somebody actually went through the process of filing litigation to have the appointee removed from office, the actions that that they participated in are presumed to be legitimate. Now, i- if they could somehow held on, continued to vote even after there had been a a court ruling that they were holding office illegitimately, then those actions could be contested. But what I should say is somebody can file, can nevertheless file a challenge to any of those actions. But I believe that the city would be on strong legal footing saying that that the those um actions were legitimate when taken. The city would, however, incur the cost of of defending against that litigation.
Okay. That that's helpful. And I guess the other thing that I that I think about is just, I think, you know, I I'm a I'm a believer in democracy and I believe that the people of Larkspur should should be able to vote on who their next representative is. And so I, my um inclination is to go with a general election in November. I I think turnout might be low in August to be mail-in. There may not be anything else on the ballot. Plus, it's more expensive. I think if we were to um hold an election, my my inclination would be to do the general election in in November.
No, I I think I agree with most of Stephanie's points. I mean, the main thing is is not really having someone until September, you know, certified, makes it almost pointless. I think when Councilmember Haroff left, you know, there was a real question. That was a lot of time. And and you know, the other pragmatic consideration for me is, you know, how divisive and controversial the issues in 2023, we had an explicitly split council. And you know, and then we had things like North Magnolia. Now, who knows what's coming up? But you know, right now, we're heading into budget, then there's the summer. So I I don't I don't see the same risks, even though that's somewhat unknown. Um, and and the same notion that we also thought that doing it in March versus in November of 2023 would increase turnout. Surprisingly, it was only 50 some percent, but we thought it'd be 70. Yeah, but but I mean, but to the point of really, you know, the the city feeling that they their voice has been heard. They have their representative. I'm I'm inclined to agree with all that. So I mean, I I'd be happy to sleep on it, but I I'm pretty sure that my decision would be to go to November.
It sounds like you've got consensus. I agree.
Okay. Um, and and I just want to say part part of my my logic is also I really like our council and I like, I think we can work through issues. You know, we all have independent personalities, but we're all so, you know, flexible and we're willing to hear each other. And I'm not really worried about a two-two, you know, drag down. Oh, now we can't do anything because, you know, we're no one's being flexible. So I mean, if it were a little different makeup, I might say we want an odd number so we don't have tie votes. I don't feel that with this group. So I'm I'm I feel comfortable that between now and November, we'll be able to work through anything that comes up. So.
To have a forum, though, to make sure we're all here.
No more vacations in Mexico. Don't look over here.
All right. So so having that in mind, I think our direction to staff uh is to put this on the May council to put it on the November election. Is that clear?
Very clear. And I will add it is actually the de facto officer doctrine.
See that? Well done.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, and that wraps up uh item eight point three. And uh having done that, we move to item nine, which is adjournment. So thank you all very much and uh see you soon.